All right, good evening, everyone. We have another full house this evening. It's great to see so many faces. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led today by the Creativity Club from Sealston, followed by a moment of silence. All right, you may be seated. All the members of the Creativity Club, would you like to tell us about your club at Sealston? Hi, thank you, same to you.
The Creative Community Club from Sealston combines art and generosity for our community. Our students use their creative thinking skills to show kindness and acts of service, both inside and outside of our King George community.
We decorated the school with words from the Prostitivity Project. We made art for our friends. We are sewing pillows. We will donate them to Heritage Hall.
We made cards for military service members to go in the care package drive that Sealston collected. We planted spider plants and some decorated pot buddy club. The plants went to the Heritage Hall.
Awesome. And we know it's School Board Appreciation Month. We have some pillows for you that...
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you all stand? Thank you. Can we get a picture? Want to get a picture with our pillows? Would you like to get a picture?
You want to get a picture?
Get a picture with our pillows? I feel like we need to document pillows for poster. Thank you so much. The pillows are beautiful. All right, so at this time, we will begin our recognition for the evening. We have quite a few. So first up, Dr. Benson would like to, I guess, acknowledge the King George County School Board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our community, rightly so, our students and staff have already recognized that it is School Board Appreciation Month. And so I'm pleased to present certificates to each of our School Board members on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association. In doing so, thank you for your service. It is not easy. There is a lot of work that people don't see and our community don't realize you put in to fulfilling your responsibilities on their behalf. And so we do appreciate each of you, and we certainly appreciate collectively all that you do for our students in our community. So with that said, I have a certificate I'd like to present to each of you again in appreciation for your service from the Virginia School Boards Association.
Let's get them all.
Going to stand off or... All right, at this time, we will turn things over to Ms. Strauss, who has two topics for us this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the School Board, Dr. Benson, Dr. Boyd's staff, and community members. I am Dee Strauss, Department Chair for Career and Technical Education at King George High School, and this month is Career and Technical Education Month. At King George High School, we've been sharing announcements every morning. Students have been and will hear about the different CTE classes offered at King George High School. Students have been and will also hear about our CTSOs and how these chapters can enhance students' marketability by taking advantage of these classes and participating in these chapters. We ask the students to imagine, just imagine, growing plants in a greenhouse, building a wall, designing buildings, welding sheet metal, creating a webpage, producing a video, running a store, learning to hack or not be hacked, doing your own taxes, putting on an event, balancing the books, and so much more. We ask students to take a different look at electives and think CTE. We want to share some of this with you here tonight in celebration of CTE Month. I would like to ask our students from all of the different chapters to come forward now and deliver your bag to each one of the board members, and then we'll have each chapter speak.
Thank you. Boy, you have so much talent. Thank you.
We'll start with DECA, and then we'll move through the other organizations that are here today.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Natalie Pelto, and I am the King George Chapter DECA President. So this was our update we gave at the Joint CTSO Meeting last Friday for the District Leadership Conference last November. We had 17 winners in this event. King George DECA sponsored families at Thanksgiving and Christmas through social services and volunteered at the Fall Festival last semester. We also attended the State Fair for DECA Day. State Leadership Conference is in three weeks, March 4th through 6th, in Virginia Beach. We are taking 29 competitors to this competition. If you're interested in being a judge for this event, please reach out to Mrs. Strauss as soon as possible, and practicing is ongoing for this event. Winners at this event will move on to our International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia at the end of April. Our SVE, Fox Docs, was gold recertified, so that team has already secured their spot to Atlanta to compete and participate at this conference. Our DECA Chapter has had a member of the Virginia DECA State Action Team for the last two years, Troy Spillman, who is also the student representative, and he will represent Virginia DECA and King George DECA at this conference in Atlanta. This spring, our chapter will host a Little Caesar's Pizza Kit fundraiser, volunteer at Family Day with King George Parks and Rec, and assist in a clothing drive that I'm doing for a fast fashion campaign for a project. And we hope to participate in the Special Olympics torch run with the Sheriff's Office. Y Street, the youth activism organization that promotes health through its Share the Air and Rev Your Bev programs, is still open for members, and if any KGHs students are interested, please reach out to Alina Pointez. Thank you.
FFA.
Good evening. I'm Emma Cook.
And I'm Ava Cook.
And we are the President and Vice President of the King George Chapter FFA. We have been really busy this fall and winter. We have competed and took fourth place in the Area FFA Tractor Driving Competition.
We have also competed and took first place in the Federation Small Engine Contest. We will go on to the area competition in March at the Reynolds Community College in Geachlin.
In December, we held our annual Pointe Setta Sale and adopted two families for Christmas and assisted in another.
We also provide refreshments for the February Joint CTSO Meeting, and we are currently in the process of planning for our spring sale.
The King George County FFA would like to thank you for all your support and all you do for our students. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. And now FBLA.
Good evening. I'm Tyler Trusslow. I'm a member of FBLA. So so far this year, FBLA has had a great year. We attended the State Fair in September and had a lot of fun there. And then in October, we helped with the Angels Angels Event and helped Special Needs Children Run. And then in December, we gathered gifts for families in need and had a lot of fun doing that. For 2022, our focus is to build relationships with local businesses in the community and plan on participating in spring events coming up. And we'd like to thank all of you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you share with everyone what FBLA stands for?
Future Business Leaders of America.
All right, thank you.
And now we have HOSA.
Hello, my name is Lisa Tate. My student representatives were not able to make it here. Interesting enough, most of our future health professionals all have jobs in the evening, and when they heard school was out, they signed up to work. So I am here representing HOSA. I am the teacher representative for them. HOSA does not necessarily, it's not an acronym, but it is the Future Healthcare Professionals. And Nurse Cameron started the program, and I've had the honor to step in this first year and be on a really big learning curve. But I'm really excited. We have about 50 to 60 members. Thirty of those are very active, and they're always asking me, Ms. Tate, what are we doing next? They truly have a heart of service. We started with filling the bird feeders at Heritage Hall. We now have add squirrel feeders, made by someone's uncle. We go over on a regular basis, once a month, to fill those. And on Veterans Day, we're able to get their names, each veteran, and write personal cards to them, and the students were able to go in and meet them, thank them for their service, and we gave them a beautiful patriotic pair of socks, nice and warm, very practical. And then we did a food drive, no, excuse me, personal care products drive for Love Thy Neighbor. And then that moved us into our Christmas season, and actually, one of our groups actually bought gifts. We did Adopt a Angel type thing, Adopt a Resident, and we bought gifts for them. So now we're moving into this next semester, and we had just finished week-long making Valentine's cards. The students during IE would come, very generous. We bought, we made 150 Valentine's cards, and we had 100 gifts. We're going to be delivered today, but actually, since we're out today, we'll take them over tomorrow during IE, and we'll fill the bird feeders. Our big event is in April. In April, we're going to have a blood drive. We're working with Red Cross, and we, the dates, I'm going to give the specific dates. It's actually the Saturday before Easter, in the cafeteria of the high school. We will be there from 9:00 to 3:00. It is a program where you will sign up with Red Cross, and then we're just a support staff. This is our HOSA shirt, made by Elizabeth Richard, which we are so proud of. And we did have the honor of meeting with all of our CTE So's on Friday, and we were able to kick off our program for this week, where we are raising money for American Heart Association. It's called Finn's Challenge. You probably are familiar with that. Today, we were start with wearing red, and then each day, we have a Spirit Week, and we are promoting, helping them raise money. But what's great about Finn's Challenge, it's not just teaching the kids to raise money, but they're doing things like random acts of kindness. They get points for that. They get points for sleeping eight hours. So I'm really excited about this challenge that Ms. Latney encouraged HOSA to take over, and that's HOSA.
We also have Skills USA, but I don't believe there are any students here from that. Ms. Trusslow will come up and speak about our CTE program at the high school with some data for you.
Good evening, Dr. Benson and School Board members. My name is Kim Trusslow. I'm one of the Assistant Principals at the high school. Thank you for allowing us the time tonight to celebrate Career and Technical Education Appreciation Month and the wonderful things that we do through our CTE programs here in King George County. Thank you to all of our wonderful students who came out this evening, even on a snow day, to tell you about what they accomplish through our CTE programs. We appreciate your hard work, your community service, and for representing King George County Schools, not only here locally, but also at state and national competitions. We are very proud of your accomplishments, and we look forward to more to come as we move through the events that will continue to happen through the state and nationally this school year. I would like to take the opportunity to thank our wonderful CTE teachers who make CTE a possibility for all of our students. The teachers at King George Middle School that teach CTE are Mrs. Margaret Batusta and Mrs. Jennifer Watson. They teach computer solutions and Make It Your Business and keyboarding. Teachers at the high school include Mr. A.J. Addison, who teaches Principles of Business and Marketing, Sports Marketing, Economics and Personal Finance, which from here on out, I'll call EPF for shortness, and he is the co-DECA sponsor. Mr. Ray Blazer teaches Welding, Sheet Metal, Construction Technology, and is a Skills USA co-sponsor. Mrs. Kathy Crop teaches Drafting and is also a Skills USA sponsor. Major Grant Callahan and Master Sergeant Jeff Halker are the instructors for our NJROTC program, which you'll hear more about, about their accomplishments over this past week. Mrs. Kim Darrell teaches Business Management, CIS, and EPF, and is also an FBLA sponsor. Dr. Nicole Lowe teaches Teacher Cadets and sponsors teachers for tomorrow. Mr. Stan Mitchell, Horticulture, Landscaping, Greenhouse Management, and FFA Advisor. Mr. Butch Norris, Criminal Justice. Mrs. Christina Sanders, Accounting, Advanced Accounting, Economics and Finance, and FBLA sponsor. Mr. Ralph Stefani, Building Trades, Carpentry, and Skills USA co-sponsor. Ms. Amanda Step, Health and Medical Sciences and Medical Terminology, and co-HOSA sponsor. Mrs. Dee Strauss, Introduction to Marketing, Marketing, Advanced Marketing, Business Law, and EPF, as well as the co-sponsor of DECA. Mrs. Lisa Tate, Nurse Aid Program, which leads to a state licensure at the end of that program, is also the HOSA sponsor. Mr. David Vogel, Cybersecurity and Computer Science, and Mr. Martin Wallek's, Video Media Technology, Design Multimedia, IT Fundamentals, and Economics and Personal Finance, and he is also a co-sponsor of FBLA. Thank you for giving me a couple of moments to read off their names for their recognition, but I also wanted to be able to list out all of those courses for you, to show you the over 55 courses that we offer at the high school level alone for electives for our students through the CTE program. This school year, 2,129 students will be served through our CTE classes, both at the middle and the high school levels. These CTE courses provide King George County students with a comprehensive program of study that aligns directly with the 17 career clusters and provides them the 22 necessary workplace readiness skills needed to be successful after graduation in the workplace, college, and in the military. Students in the CTE courses have the opportunity to earn industry certifications, become sequence completers, and earn state licensures that takes them directly into a professional organization. Thank you again for allowing us this opportunity to share this evening. One of the great joys of my job, I supervise four departments at the high school, and CTE is dear to my heart, as I was a CTE teacher when I was in the classroom. We truly appreciate your continued support of the CTE programs. We appreciate that you are always supportive of us when we come to you with grand ideas about what we would like to do next and for our students. So thank you for your time, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss, I believe you're also going to hit DECA? Yes, go ahead.
Not only is February CTE Month, but it is also DECA Advocacy Month. So I would like Natalie Pelto, our President, to share with you some information about DECA around the world.
So I'm going to give you some more information about King George DECA. So we are King George High School DECA. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. DECA's comprehensive learning program integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, promotes competition, and connects to business. DECA prepares the next generation to be academically prepared, community-oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders. Membership by the numbers, 152,000 members, 3,400 total chapters in all 50 states, and India, Indonesia, Japan, Korea, Antonuro, Poland, Puerto Rico, Saudi Arabia, Spain, Alberta, British Columbia, China, Germany, and Guam. These are some statistics on the impact of DECA on students. 98% of DECA members report they gained skills to improve professional and personal behavior, and 91% of DECA members report that DECA experiences connected school to the real world for them. This chapter is made up of students in the Principles of Business and Marketing, Introduction to Marketing classes, marketing, advanced marketing, sports and entertainment marketing, and economics and personal finance classes here at KGHS. Students in these courses during the course of each year may join KG DECA. Typically, our student membership dues are $35 for the year. Alumni and professional dues for the year are $25. Although seniors attending the State Leadership Conference during their senior year can page as $5 for their upcoming year's alumni dues. Our membership saw a bump of 25 students over last year's membership. We had a total of 202 members in 2021 to 2022 school year. Our officer team has been working since May of 2021, when they were elected to office. We didn't know what would be allowed to do, but this organization, along with chapters around the globe, have done amazing things, both virtually and in person. I am here to recognize our King George DECA officers. The President is me, Natalie Pelto. VP of Leadership, Rex Wang. VP of Career Development, Andrew Water. VP of Marketing, Adriana Manero. VP of Finance, Tyler Trusslow. VP of Hospitality, Catherine Bennett. Our Fox Docs Managers are Alina Pointez, Samantha Tipton, and Lindsay Spillman. Our District 19 President is Alina Pointez, and our Virginia DECA Vice President of Leadership is Troy Spillman. DECA has a rich committee rubric that the officer team is encouraged to use to help and support the efforts of KG DECA. Any student member interested in working on projects, activities, or events can do so to gain leadership experience. The KG Officer Team regularly recruits other members by getting to know DECA via our DECA Mate Program, which matches each officer with a group of members, approximately 12 to 14 members per officer. This DECA Mate Program provides the membership with a small group experience, not only to connect with each other, but with an officer that also provides information and updates to their DECA mates. National DECA has over $300,000 in scholarships, and it gives away annually. We hope to hear soon if any of our seniors have made it through the first round. Virginia DECA gives away over $10,000 in scholarships, and we have two students who are interviewed for these $1,000 awards. This will happen virtually the week of the State Leadership Conference. National DECA is sponsored by many industries, companies, and universities. You can see these sponsors on the deca.org site. King George DECA has many local sponsors, including Fredericksburg Eagles, Number 4123, Absolute Pest Solutions, Bayside Ford, and Bayside CDJR, exit Realty Expertise, Dr. Richard Cottrell, DDS, King George Veterinary Clinic, the Rotary Club of King George and Dogren, CNF Bank in King George, and countless volunteers who have judged, interviewed, and chaperoned our members each year. We thank you for your support, for allowing us to share and advocate for DECA this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Natalie. All right, thank you all. And next, we have Master Sergeant Halker, who is here to tell us about the NJROTC Air Rifle Competition.
Good evening, Dr. Benson, members of the board, King George community. I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to come and take a couple of minutes to congratulate a couple of our young cadets that have strived really hard in the past, you know, four or five months, and taking a lot of time after school to be able to get to where they are now. Behind me, I have Cadet Lieutenant Commander Daniel Weber and Petty Officer Second Class, William Taylor. Both of these cadets have strived really hard in our air rifle program that we have. Recently, as I came aboard the program, we only had a couple cadets who were actively participating. Now we're up to about 15 cadets, and inside of that, these two cadets, three days a week, every week, every day, or all three days are competing and practicing over in the old elementary classroom for two hours after their school day. Recently, we just went down to Alabama, where both of these cadets shot against every Navy school that has an air rifle program in the United States of America. Daniel Weber took 18th out of 130 cadets that shot down there, and William Taylor took 85th. Daniel Weber is right now in the possibility of taking or going to our Navy Services, or JRTC Services, which means they will compete against every JRTC unit in the United States, Air Force, Marine Corps, Army, and Navy. So I just really wanted to take a couple of seconds out of your guys' day to recognize these two cadets.
Thank you, Master Sergeant, and congratulations to our cadets. Thank you for representing us so well. All right, at this time, we will now open the floor to, for public and employee comment. I'm going to ask that you please state your name, address, and that you limit your comment to three minutes in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Ms. Rinko? Okay, all right. And before we get started, I will make one note. We will be having a public hearing a little later this evening on the strategic plan. So if your comment pertains to that, I'll ask that we hold until that point in time. That being said, Ms. Lilly?
Good evening. My name is Amy Lilly, address 8484 Pasquetanze Road. I'm a parent of a 17-year-old son at King George High School. I'm here again tonight to follow up on my previous statements from last board's meeting, just to reiterate the fact that there is no need to reinstitute or make a motion to put masks back on these children. The parents have the rights under state statute to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child under the Rights of Parents Act 1-240.1 under state statute. under the Rights of Parents Act 1-240.1 under state statute. I'm also here about some contact tracing concerns. My son was identified as a close contact again just last week, five or six days after his last known exposure. When we received the email, it was in the evening, and we were told that he could return, not the next day, but the day after that, as long as he wore a mask and was symptom-free. There's another parent who received an email that night about her child testing or being within close contact, same date, and was told her child could return the next day, as long as she was symptom-free. Why are we paying these people to contact trace? Why are we contact tracing? How effective is contact tracing when somebody is exposed on the fourth and they are not notified and put in quarantine until the ninth? That's absurd. It is a waste of money, it's a waste of grant money, and it's a waste of time. Furthermore, the Virginia Department of Health itself, one of their top epidemiologists, has stated that this Omicron variant, there is no need to do this contact tracing anymore because the incubation time is so short that by the time somebody's identified as a close contact, they've already come into contact with everybody that they could contaminate. So, why are we doing contact tracing? Why are we spending so much time and effort doing contact tracing that is not consistent? My son was also identified as a close contact of someone back right before Thanksgiving break. In fact, it was the Thursday before Thanksgiving break. I was told by the school nurse at that time that he had been pulled out of a classroom, placed into the COVID quarantine room so he could exit out a side door and not contact anybody else. I was called at 1:30 in the afternoon. I showed up at the school at 2:00 PM, and he was still in class. And they marched him out, down through the main corridor and out the front door, exposing God knows how many people according to the contact tracers. There's no consistency, it's absolutely absurd. I'm very disappointed that this is what the district has chosen to spend its money.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly, your three minutes are up.
And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Vance, do we have anyone online? Two? Okay, Mr. Brian Gregan?
Brian Gregan, 9485 Elm Court, King George, Virginia, Shiloh District. I too am calling to comment regarding the contact tracing. I sent a few emails to you guys regarding this, and the VDH.
Mr. Gregan?
Yes.
I don't think we can hear you if you're speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Vance, is he? Online?
Can you hear me now? Hello? Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay, can you hear me now? Hello?
Mr. Vance, is he? Mr. Gregan?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Okay, Mr. Vance, can we restart our timer? All right, go ahead, Mr. Gregan.
Thank you. Brian Gregan, 9485 Elm Court, Shiloh District. I'm calling to also discuss the removal of contact tracing. I ask that you no longer do this. It's not necessary, it's not really effective, and the Health Department has given the okay to no longer doing individual contact tracing. 15 counties have discontinued contact tracing in the state of Virginia, including Stafford and Virginia Beach. So, I ask that you to no longer contact trace in King George County. Thank you.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I just wanted to echo the previous comments made regarding contact tracing. Numerous parents and students being notified after their supposed quarantine time has already ended. Just seems like a complete waste of time and money on everyone's part and even making that effort. And in addition to that, VDH on January 25th changed their contact tracing policy to focus, instead of contact tracing everyone, to only contact trace following up on outbreaks in high-risk settings. I ask that we do that same thing and follow the VDH guidelines as far as scaling that back appropriately. And I would also like to make the comment that I believe it's been asked in previous meetings. I have not seen an answer yet, at least not a publicly posted answer, as far as what percentage of our student body and teachers have ultimately contracted COVID due to an exposure at school. People who were placed into quarantine and then later tested positive. And I would just like to follow up on that and see if that's something we could get an answer on. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. All right. Okay, at this time, we will move on to changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, Madam Chair. I asked them.
Okay, Mr. Rolls?
I'd like to clarify one item there first before I suggest items. So, for the first discussion item is updates to COVID protocol. Clarified that also includes discussion afterwards amongst the board, and will it cover all things COVID, including masking, contact tracing, anything related to COVID?
It will be the COVID protocol updates that Dr. Benson has prepared for us this evening. It will involve discussion. So, I mean.
I'd like to discuss prior items and just the update. So, with that in mind, I'd like to add discussion on masking on buses, staff masking, and, like I said, I don't know exactly what he's going to say. So, I'll just suggest also the contact tracing, which probably will be what he'll discuss.
Okay, we'd like to add those as three separate, we can.
And one final thing, just start brainstorming ideas to accelerate our coming together as a high-performing team. Ideas along those lines.
Okay, so some of that was a bit ambiguous at the end. So, you wanted to add contact tracing, masking on buses.
And staff masking.
All right, staff masking, all right. How about we vote on those individually so as to eliminate confusion with regards to adding them to the agenda? So, as far as adding contact tracing specifically, well, first of all, Dr. Benson, will contact tracing be a part of the discussion for our COVID protocols? Updates?
I didn't catch the first part of what you said.
So, Mr. Rolls's desire to specifically discuss contact tracing, will that be addressed as a part of the COVID protocol update that we'll get this evening?
Certainly, yes.
Yes, okay, so that will be addressed?
But to clarify, that'd be for action as well, possible action.
Okay, well, we don't have a section for possible action, but we can always make a motion as a part of a discussion item. So, it will be a part of the discussion, and we can act on it accordingly? You amendable to that? Okay, masking on buses. So, do we have a second to add masking on buses to the agenda?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion is denied. I'm adding staff masking to the agenda discussion items this evening. Do we have a second to add staff masking as a discussion item?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion carries. So, we will add, to be consistent, how about we add staff masking? Well, let's just add it to the end. We'll add a discussion item E to discuss staff masking. All right, do we have any additional changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
First of all, I'd like to add to the agenda clarification of last month's motion regarding optional masking for students, particularly talking about extracurricular activities and so on. So, clarification, there may not be any issues, but a discussion about it, hearing from Dr. Benson and so on.
Are you amendable to asking about that as a part of our COVID protocols? I think that would fall under that, so we could discuss it at that time?
As long as it can be part of that, that's fine.
Okay.
And then also, I would like to add to the agenda the procedures for placing agenda items on the proposed agenda, specifically referring to BDDC and the school board policies and regulations.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion is denied.
Also, I'd like to add to the agenda mask requirements for visitors.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right, Chair votes nay, motion carries. So, we will add, excuse me, masking for visitors as discussion item F. All right, any additional changes this evening? All right, I will, we will be removing the January 24th, 2022 regular meeting minutes from the consent agenda. There were a number of updates to make to those. So, all right.
Sure, we skipped over one of the items I had suggested for the agenda.
Which one?
That was talking about ways to accelerate the process of coming together as a team.
Okay, so that will be a part of the, so the VSBA training sessions is an opportunity to talk about how we develop policies for ourselves as a board?
I'm asking for a broader discussion than that, so we can just do it then, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that would be my proposal.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Okay, any further changes? We captured all of this, all right. So, moving on to our consent agenda, we will have the, only the January 10th, 2022 regular meeting minutes for consideration this evening. Do we have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
I move that we adopt the January 10th minutes as transcribed.
All right, do we have this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, and at this time, we will move on to our action items for this evening. So, first, we have our strategic plan 2022 through 2027, which we heard about last, our last meeting, and we will begin with a public hearing for those who may be here to discuss any comments on the strategic plan. And it sounds like we do not have anyone. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to make a comment before we move to action? All right, sounds like not. So, with that, do we have a motion to approve the strategic plan 2022 through 2027?
I will move that we adopt the King George County Schools Strategic Plan for 2022 through 2027 as presented.
I'll second it.
All right, so we'll now open the floor for debate. So, if there are further comments or discussion, Mr. Bush on the strategic plan?
No, I made comments last time, I don't need anything else to add.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hawk?
None tonight, thank you.
All right, Dr. Cartwright?
I think we've covered all areas in the strategic plan for employee investment and development, quality instruction and innovation, community collaboration, engagement, and communication, safe and secure and healthy learning environments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, look at Dr. Cartwright, Mr. Rolls?
I do have some questions ahead, I got some time to look at a little bit more detail since last time. So, looking at page 27, towards the bottom, it's got strategies for Objective D. And question about Strategy 5, it says to explore options to move federal title grant-funded positions over to operational budget. And I'm wondering why that's, why we want to do that, what's a good thing to do?
Which page was that, page 11?
Page 10 of the strategic plan.
Page 10.
It's Goal 1, Objective D.
Which objective? Objective D?
Delta. It's Goal 1. That's worse.
So, the primary premise there is to free up the title, the positions that we currently use federal money to cover so that that federal money can be used to more discreetly focus on some of the other learning needs, particularly learning loss. Over the pandemic, it would just give us greater flexibility to further address academic need in particular at the school level. Currently, we are, you know, the last couple of budget years, we've been funded at rather austere level locally, and as a result, we've had to be creative in terms of utilizing other funding sources to maintain positions at the school level that we use to address academic needs there, which, you know, we do. I think that this being a five-year plan, that we would look, particularly in the out years, to try to transition back to having those positions funded locally or having those positions funded through the operation budget, operating budget for the year, rather than borrowing against federal funds to keep those positions in place for our students.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, that means this want to increase the local funding? So, we have overall larger pot of money, is how that, now?
No, not necessarily. We'd simply like to be able to shift from the federal obligation that we currently have for these positions to an operational budget. Doesn't necessarily mean that it requires more money. It just means that we may have to reprioritize within the operational budget. But we'd like to move back to where those federal funds could be used for other purposes as they were prior to the rather austere times caused by the pandemic. I think I've captured that fairly correctly, correct me, and I want to thank Dr. Gaston is here. As you know from last meeting and previous meetings, Dr. Gaston helped facilitate this process. But, and we have other members of staff here. So, if I misspeak, then don't be bashful, step up and add or correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, and you're talking about this being a living document, so I wonder about the significance of approving this today? How much that matters, you know, versus making updates later? Have you talked about it a little bit?
Sure, well, we'd certainly like the board to adopt it because as we talked about last time, the next step is to really operationalize the strategic plan. That means we have a preset format for assigning responsibility to these objectives, putting wheels on the car, so to speak, so that we can get this plan in motion. Again, we'll identify metrics where appropriate. I know that long-term, we're looking at a dashboard creation so that our community can follow progress with the plan. So, that's the significance of having it adopted by the board that allows staff then to put wheels on this car and get it moving.
And we'll be looking at the comprehensive policy for the comprehensive plan later, and there it talks about the biannual review, so is that? So, we'll see metrics before that, as we actually look at the metrics and see how we're doing.
Yes, my hope would be that it wouldn't be limited to a biannual review. That's required at minimum, but that we would actually have a dashboard where it could be accessed at any moment to see updates. Granted, that just because of the nature of some of the parts of the plan, you know, again, it's a five-year plan, so we wouldn't see the very first day, everything all fleshed out. You may have some objectives that may come later or sequentially be later in the plan. You may even have objectives down the road that are supplanted with new objectives as time moves on and new needs are identified. That's what I meant by a living document, that it's not something that we set today with the board's approval, and then we leave. with the board's approval, and then we leave it as it is for five years. We will continuously adjust it as new needs arise and we have new challenges to meet. So I hope that answers, or at least addresses your question.
Want to go back a little bit? Excellent example. I wonder how flexible this is, how much we're locking things in that are said here. For instance, there's, one of the strategies talks about paying the cost of AP exams. So are we essentially agreeing to that? Or just basically saying we would hope one day to be able to pay for the AP exams?
Both, I think in reverse order. I think that we would hope that we would be able to cover the cost for the AP exams for those students who engage in that curriculum, who work very hard throughout the course and offer them the opportunity to sit for that exam. I don't know. I don't know financially that's feasible in year one, or if it would be something we would work at in terms of like year three. But that's, that's what that's aiming towards.
So I guess that one, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about now, or, you know, of course, it'd be a budget decision later, but there's policy trade-offs there. You know, if we're taking money to give her college credit, that might be taking away money from, I say, giving all the K through 12 opportunities that we can give would be a concern with that. I don't know. It's probably a year-to-year budget discussion by the start of that.
Very likely could, yes.
Dr. Benson, you had just mentioned paying for AP exams, and I've not read all the way through this, but are you playing with the idea of eliminating that cost for students? Because I know personally, I have an experience with that of this year, I'm not going to mention the class specifically or, or the situation, but I had a teacher, I'm currently in three AP classes myself, and one of my teachers told me that despite the fact that I, for the college that I'm attending, I need a five on the AP exam to get anything out of it, that for any purpose behind that exam, I have to get a five. So I did not plan on taking the exam despite being in the class. And my teacher told me that if I did not take the AP exam, I would be forced to take the final exam for this class that she said was harder than the actual AP exam. So I am essentially paying a hundred dollars for an AP test that I'm going to circle C on every answer choice to avoid tanking my grade. That, that's what I'm doing. Paying a hundred dollars to not take my, to not tank my grade. Because I don't need the AP exam. It's not going to help me. But that's what I'm doing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stillman. So Mr. Rolls, do you have any further comments?
Well, as an interesting point, so what J P courses that may ask? I, I don't want to call it. If you want to say, okay, fine. I gotta say, because if it was AP economics, probably learning there, there's no such thing as a free lunch. And so I do, I do get concerned about free things that can be wasted, like in this case, you're having to pay a hundred bucks, but it's the county, then, you know, I don't want people in that situation where paying for them to take a test that isn't necessarily rendering any value. So thank you for that.
All right, so I conclude your comments?
If I could make a comment, just regarding.
So in, in the spirit of following Robert's rules, right, Mr. Rolls is completing his first comment, so we'll stick to that. So Mr. Rolls, your time is ticking. So do you have additional comments to make?
Oh, yes, I'll do one more. So, so we approved this, and the first step, I understand, Mr. Dr. Benson, is you're going to go and break this down. All these things are kind of general, and so you're going to get metrics. So we're actually something to measure. And then based on that, I think Mr. Bush had asked us before, as far as your annual evaluation, that we would use this plan to evaluate the school's performance against it. So in each case, we need to be able to clearly understand what this is saying.
I don't want to take your time.
Do you understand my question? I wasn't sure, by the way.
I think, I would certainly agree that the, the last half of what you said, certainly, we want this to be transparent, and we want this to afford our community an even deeper level of understanding about our schools and their successes and the challenges we have. The evaluating the schools in terms of like accreditation is a function of the state Board of Education. My evaluation, I think, is what you were talking about at the beginning when Mr. Bush was, that's completely up to the board, what you would like to use in terms of criteria to evaluate me as an individual. But I'm trying to just draw a distinction between my evaluation, the evaluation of schools is not necessarily, again, a function of the local school board as much as is the, the ongoing assessment by the school board. And that's why this is being developed in a way that'll provide the board ongoing data, not just every other year data. But, you know, I think as was mentioned in a previous meeting, we can have an aspect of the plan brought forward at, at, you know, sporadically at meetings, formatively. So the board and our community has a better sense along the way, how things are going with, in regards to objectives and aims that we have fleshed out in our strategic plan. So I hope that helps kind of distinguish between, I think, the, the different evaluative processes you were, you were referring to. If not, let me know.
Okay, so I guess one would just ask you to, I see, let me try and find you the goal and objective here.
So Mr. Rolls, that concludes your 10, your first 10 minutes of debate, excluding the minute I allotted to Mr. Stillman. So at this time, it seems that Mr. Bush had additional comments to add. So this will start our second line of comment.
Yeah, point of order, Madam Chair. I believe the two 10-minute periods relate to debate from a motion.
And this, this is a motion on the action item for the strategic plan?
Oh, all right. Okay. Yeah, I was, that was my question. And also, I was just going to answer what Mr. Stillman had said, is that it's been my experience that what you're experiencing is not uncommon. That's all. Public education with AP classes. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but it's not uncommon.
Certainly. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Hawk? Any further comment?
No, no, thank you.
Dr. Cartwright?
No comment.
Mr. Rolls?
Okay, so I'm looking at page 29 of the overall packet, and for the strategy, it's, the plan, it's page 12. It looks like it's objective A, strategy five.
What page, what page of the comprehensive plan?
It's page 12 of the strategic plan, and it's page 29 of the overall packet.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, I've got to read it since the clock's ticking. So I just, my question before is just wanting these things to be clear. So we all know we're talking about what, what metrics we're using to evaluate the school, and if we do use this as far as any kind of evaluations aboard, that we know what it means. So strategy five on that page, it says audit and review division reading and mathematics programs, offering professional development and resource allocation to support equitable and consistent quality and access across all KGCS schools to high-quality practices, resources, experiences, and instruction. And seen that we're, you know, equitable thrown around a lot lately. So I read that whole thing, and I'm not quite sure what that means.
Our word equitable in that context
Right.
Would mean to ensure that every student has an opportunity to succeed against the learning standards that he or she is, is approaching. So I think we all understand that our students come to us with varied needs. All students don't develop cognitively at the very same time, and so our teachers do a wonderful job of differentiating within the classroom. Sometimes we need to differentiate across classrooms, but we, we take the approach that that helps students meet success. And that's really what that, what equitable means in that context. It's not simply a one-size-fits-all. It's that we adjust and we provide instruction. And to provide instruction, what I read is that we need to then tailor our professional learning in such a way that it, it increases the capacity of our teachers to differentiate accordingly. So it's not a word that's thrown around necessarily. It's, it's one that is meaningful in that we don't, we don't approach instruction as kind of cookie cutter instruction. Teachers do marvelous and miraculous things every day because they make so many decisions about how to best reach this student that may work for this student, may not work for this student. This student may need a different approach or a different strategy to, to realize better success against that standard that they're approaching that day.
Thank you. I just need a second just with that.
Mr. Rolls, any further comment?
Yes, one second. That concludes, that's all for my comments.
Okay. All right. I do not have any comments other than to thank Mr. Dr. Gaston for his time and effort putting this together. And so at this time, call for a vote. So all in favor of approving the strategic plan for 2022 through 2027, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, next, for consideration this evening, we have policy AF, which is relevant, our policy discussing the comprehensive plan for the division. So at this time, do we have a motion to approve policy AF, the comprehensive plan?
I move that we approve policy AF of the comprehensive, regarding the comprehensive plan as presented.
All right, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
All right. Okay, so open the floor for debate. Mr. Bush, do you have any?
No.
Question. All right, Ms. Hawk? Dr. Cartwright?
No comment.
Mr. Rolls?
Yes, this question for Dr. Benson. I see that it's, appears to be unchanged. Did we ever get any feedback from V SBA about the feedback provided?
I've not received. I need to check. Did I did forward your recommended edit or wording, I guess, to that paragraph, but I've not heard back from Ms. Ewing, no.
Okay. Yes, I, I just kind of would like to have the opportunity to hear back from, from her before we just adopted as is. We did submit requests to changes. We just haven't heard back yet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rolls. So at this time, all in favor of approving the comprehensive plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, next for consideration, policy B D D H dash R, public participation at school board meetings. All right, it is on page 39 of our packet. Do we have, I guess, well, I'll, I'll read it for those in the public, since this is a new policy. So this is pertaining to public participation at school board meetings. So the change, and from how we ordinarily run public comments, so this indicates that those wanting to speak may register with a clerk prior to the meeting in person, or if the meeting is being streamed via digital media, they may register online prior to the meeting being called to order. When recognized by the chair, speakers will now be asked to identify themselves by name and state their religion, their relationship to the school division, staff member, student, parent, community member, and indicating which magisterial district they reside, the Dogren, James Madison, James Monroe, or Shiloh District. So that's a change whereby average addresses are no longer needed to be stated publicly. So at this time, do we have a motion to approve policy B D D H dash R, public participation at school board meetings?
I move to adopt the B D H R public participation at school board meetings document.
I second it.
All in favor? Or sorry, do we have any discussion? Mr. Bush? Ms. Hawk? Dr. Cartwright?
No comment.
Mr. Rolls?
Yes, I move to amend. Each of the instances where it says may register, to change to will register. Additionally, I'd like to consider inserting a paragraph before the, the last paragraph, and I have it written here for your consideration.
Say that, excuse me, can you just repeat that, Mr. Rolls?
So each case where it says those want, wanting to speak, where this may register, should change to will register, or we could do shall register.
Okay.
And I also have additional paragraph I want to insert, which I'm passing down to you. It would go right before the, the current last paragraph.
So the additional paragraph that you have presented says, at the discretion of the chair or the majority of the board, speakers may be required prior to speaking to provide some or all of the following to the clerk, proof of address via government-issued photo ID, a written record of name, address, and relationship to the school. The board may deny the opportunity to speak to anyone unable to demonstrate a relationship to the school division. All right, do you have any further?
Yes, please. So when I originally proposed not having to share the address, it was to allow people to not have to divulge that personal information, but also didn't want to open it up to just anybody showing up who didn't have standing to talk, wanted to prove, be able to prove that they have standing. The point was made, that might be too onerous to, you know, solve a problem that maybe we don't have, maybe we don't have that problem. So I, I hear that, but I also want to have some provision here where if we do have a situation where it's pretty obvious that people are coming in here to be disruptive and they're not part of our community, they don't have standing to talk here, and the chair can recognize that, or, and do, take the action described here. Or the majority of the board can do it to kind of deter that kind of behavior. I think we can all agree that we don't want to see.
Okay.
That's all my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rolls. I have no comments on the policy as presented. So at this time, all in favor of approving the?
I'm sorry, just, yeah, clarification. I just want to be sure. So what you're saying, Mr. Rolls, which I agree with, just want to make sure I understand it, is that if someone cannot produce the relationship to the school division, that they shouldn't be allowed to speak in the very beginning. They would be denied. Is that?
I say it may deny. So I think for the most part, we take people at their word, but if there's reason to believe that they're not who they say they are, and they can't prove it, like with an ID that say, I'm a resident, if they're resident, then obviously they have standing to talk. But we just have that option. But in general, we're probably just going to.
And the chair would make that decision? Is that what you're suggesting?
It could be, as it says, the chair or the majority of the board. Or if it's the majority of the board, then we're going to have to wait until the meeting starts, which would be left. So, but the chair can decide before the beginning.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hawk, any further comments?
Yes, I do. I certainly understand and tend to certainly agree with, with your premise here. My concern is with the process that since we subscribe to the V S B A policy development process, how does this jeopardize our liability protection from V S B A with changes? That, that's my question.
Want to address it?
Yes, Dr. Benson.
You'll notice the dash R after the, the moniker at the top, which means this is a local regulation that supports the implementation of what V S B A creates in terms of policy. The only, the only thing I would suggest, we, we might want to look at is the, the word may in the first line would leave the decision, as I see it, to either the chair or the majority of the board. And I, I guess right there, you have, you know, who decides whether it's the chair's call or the majority of the board? And then who, and then if either what are the criteria, the successful, either the majority or the, or the chair uses to determine whether that, you know, the, the, the last part is required or not. So there's some subjectivity, it seems built in there that, that could run into, could be problematic, I guess. And I'm, I'm not trying to be critical of it. I'm just trying to think through, you know, possible scenarios that could come up that might put the board in a difficult position to, to resolve.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Attention, Ms. Hawk?
No. Since it is a regulation, I understand we have more leeway. And I, I think I'm probably going the same direction as Mr. Bush. If we say speakers will be required prior to speaking to provide some, or I didn't mean to steal your thunder here, but and then clarify that the, the chair will deny the opportunity so that that can be done before the onset of the session. I understand where you're going with this, Mr. Rolls, and I support it. I'm just not sure how, because if we get into a situation with the boardroom is packed and the board is having to decide on each speaker, I'm not sure how that works.
So, so this is, we're in debate for the action. So Ms. Hawk, do you have any further comments?
No.
Okay, Dr. Cartwright?
I noticed that one of our school divisions close by has
I noticed that one of our school divisions close by has parents sign up at least a day before, a couple hours before the meeting. Would that alleviate some of this contention?
Does that conclude your comments? Okay, Mr. Rolls?
I guess it's a matter of what information we provide. I mean, they currently sign up beforehand, but we only provide name. I think that's about it. I mean, Mrs. Rinko. Right now, what do they provide, the sign up? It's basically just a name, right?
It's just. Reason for public comment and their relationship to King George County School.
Okay.
Just for the community who didn't hear that, they provide their name, the reason for public comment, and then the relationship to King George County Schools.
Yeah, so all this might add is recording their address, checking ID if if we ask for that. And this is up to your your comment about like, who are we going to require this up? I would, I didn't want to make it too long, but but yeah, we're not going to pick out people like, hey, you want to check you out. It would be everybody or nobody. Is what I would suggest. We could add those words if if you need them.
Yep, Dr. Benson.
Just for the board's information, keep in mind, I know that this began as a a want to not put folks who come to speak on the spot as far as revealing their home address. Keep in mind that if you create a system where they do record their home address, or it's recorded here, this is a public document, the sign up, and is foillable. So they're public, you know, it may run counter to the beginning purpose for this if you have them record an address.
Yeah, I guess what I would say, I think we're still on my time, right? To that is originally in a more complicated version, we say you can destroy it after so many days, but if it's recorded on YouTube, it's there for the entire world to see for however long it's up there. So it's without FOIA. So that's even more public. So I figure it's better to have it here if we have to record it, which most time we won't versus having it online every single time someone talks.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rolls. So my comment, I agree with the the spirit, the intent of the the proposed change, but I have a lot of concerns that I think have been addressed from a procedural standpoint. I could see, even if we change it to speakers will be required, it still sits at the discretion of the chair, so then I could foresee comment, you know, members of the public coming to a meeting and taking issue with the fact that they get carded and others don't. I just, I think this opens us up to a lot of challenges. So I, and I would also point out that as it stands right now with our public comment, you know, I mean, yes, people state their addresses, but we don't fact check that they're actually saying their address. They could be listing their neighbor's address. I know people that have done things like that in the past. So we're not fact checking that now, and I don't see really how that changes with the change to stating you're from the Dogren district or James Monroe district. So I would be less inclined to support this from a procedural standpoint. So that being said, that concludes our two rounds of debate. So at this time, I'm going to call for a vote on the policy as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Point of order, ma'am, madam. Could you repeat, read the motion as you understand it for the actual reverberers that we're voting on?
Yes, I I did when I, when we opened, but I certainly will read it again. Policy, public participation at school board meetings. Members of the community are invited and encouraged to attend meetings of the King George County School Board to observe its deliberations. Any member of the community may address the board on matters related to the King George County Public Schools at any regular meeting as provided in this regulation. Those wanting to speak may register with the clerk prior to the meeting in person, or if the meeting is being streamed via digital media, may register online prior to the meeting being called to order. When recognized by the chair, speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name, state their relationship to the school division, for example, staff member, student, parent, community member, et cetera, and indicate in which magisterial district they reside, Dogren, James Madison, James Monroe, or Shiloh. Commentary during public comment time is generally limited to three minutes or to an amount of time per speaker deemed reasonable by the board chair. So at this time, all in favor, vote aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
What was that?
Nay.
Okay, chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, next for consideration this evening is the appointment of the Commonwealth Governor's School alternate. So at this time, I guess Mr. Rolls is our Commonwealth Governor's School representative at this time, and they are a voting body, so they require a quorum, a quorum at all of their meetings. And so they have asked that school boards identify an alternate member so that if primary members are unable to attend, that a quorum can be attained and they can vote accordingly. So at this time, do we have anyone we would like to nominate or volunteer to be a Commonwealth Governor's School alternate?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Cutwright.
Okay, Dr. Cutwright, you?
I'm okay with that, thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have a nomination or desire to serve? Okay, well, unless there are objections, Dr. Cutwright can be our Commonwealth Governor's School alternate. Alright, thank you, Dr. Cutwright. Okay, next we have the approval of the IDEA Part B six one one and six nineteen ARP flow-through funds. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Annually, we receive several grants through the federal government to address different student learning needs. This is, these are funds that are intended to support our students with special needs. And so what you have before you, and I know Ms. Bush, Dr. Bush is here this evening, but what you have before you is our assurance or our budget and our assurance that the funds that we would receive as we have each year will be used accordingly and in keeping with the the intention of the of the funds by federal statute. So we appreciate your consideration and approval of this. I know that these sometimes are time sensitive, Dr. Bush. Is this one that needs, no, we're okay. Okay, so this is just for discussion. We have it listed on action. It is action, but it's it's at the discretion of the board. If you choose to approve it this evening, that's fine. But if you would rather have it sit for a couple weeks for any constituent input, we're fine with that as well. Timeline wise, we're okay with that.
These funds are actually funds that were a part of the American Relief Act for additional funding that is part of our flow-through annual plan. So these were just really a budget amendment that through the flow-through funding that we already receive, we just use the additional funding of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand there that you have in change. And so in order for us to be able to expend the funds within the three years, it needs to come to board approval so that it can go to the county, the county finance office to be able to generate those object codes for accounting so we can be able to expend the funding.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Bush. So do we have an action to approve?
I will move to approve the IDEA Part B six one one and six one nine ARP flow-through funds as presented.
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
I think it's great.
Question.
Mr. Rolls?
I'll see this has to come to us for approval. That must be, what's the reason? Why would we ever not approve them? Why would we ever not approve the funds? So there must be some reason why we wouldn't if approval is required. Talk to that all, Dr.?
Yeah, that's a good question, no. But it, your approval tonight is an agreement to accept the funds and to see that the funds are spent according to the statutory requirements. So typically, federal funds will will want a board, a school board, to formally make a motion to accept the funds with the understanding the funds will be used as the grant provides. And as Dr. Bush mentioned here, this allows for an account code to be set up locally in the county finance office so that expenditures can be charged against the account code they will create. So we just need this board to officially accept the funds.
Alright, any further discussion? No. Mr. Rolls, that answered your question. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. That concludes our action items on the agenda, so we will move on to our discussion items this evening. So we will begin with an update on our COVID protocols. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Again, I'm pleased and appreciative of Ms. Fisher, Ms. Fisher's willingness to come to our school board meeting to provide us an update with the latest on on mitigating strategies, in particular, in this case, the quarantining and updates that we receive through our local VDH office. As we've said before, there's a weekly meeting. We take from that meeting those updates, and of course, this board was interested in weekly updates as to any changes or proposed amendments that may be on the horizon. So again, Ms. Fisher, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, school board members and Dr. Benson. I do appreciate you guys asking me to come here and talk a little bit more about our COVID response protocols in King George County schools. You can go, you have my, okay. Just wait one more second. If you recall, at our last meeting, we reviewed the changes that were provided by the VDH and CDC over the Christmas break, as well as the interim guidance for schools, which came out January twenty-first. In front of you now are those revised mitigation strategies. Those are really the same nine strategies that have been in place for the duration. They have been expanded upon a little bit and tweaked some in this new revision from January twenty-first. And last time we met on January twenty-fourth, we talked mostly about the first half of number two, the staying home with sick or quarantine and isolation guidelines. Today, I've highlighted for you the main topics that we have for conversation tonight. And on the on the left, I thought this is a pretty important introduction from the interim guidance. Really, the main goal of this is to keep schools and kids in school and to do it safely, and that is the goal of VDH and videoe as well as as well as us here. So stop me along the way if you have questions, if you need any clarification. And we'll go on to the first thing, which is prioritizing disease investigation and notification. Go to the next. So if you, as actually one of our public comment commenters mentioned, as well as an email that I sent to you, I think, last week, VDH did announce on January twenty-sixth, so two days after our last meeting, that they were changing their focus in terms of COVID response. We have adjusted our focus accordingly and have now prioritized the disease investigation and notification process for King George County schools. It is aligned with what VDH is providing as well. So our number one priority is monitoring positive cases and exposures to determine if there is any potential overlap in terms of outbreaks. Up until January, the definition of an outbreak was two or more cases that were linked epidemiologically. I should be able to say that by now. And in January, they revised that definition to now be three or more cases that are linked. So, you know, obviously, in order to identify outbreaks, you have to know who is positive and who has been exposed during those positive cases. So that is priority one. Our second priority for disease investigation is our employees. We continue to contact, trace any reports from our employees and notify all employees, which is a requirement under DOLI. And that is really outside of the VDH guidance because DOLI is what we follow for employees. And then our third priority is our at-risk student populations. And at-risk, a little bit different than how we typically use that in education, those would be students that are at a higher risk of being exposed to or contracting or transmitting COVID nineteen for various reasons. And that's whether they are participating in a higher risk activity, or there are limited mitigation, other of those nine mitigation strategies in place within a particular environment, or if there are increased exposure, someone has been exposed multiple times in a classroom, such as during an outbreak, or they are exposed to a household member, et cetera. So those would be the priority populations that we investigate, that we notify, and that we move forward with quarantining, et cetera. And then the deprioritization, I do want to expand a little bit more on this, talked about it, if you just go back one down there at the bottom. So as you know, the quarantine period has changed dramatically. It started at fourteen days and could be a total of twenty-four, was then reduced to, I think, ten days and could be a total of fourteen, and now is at five days with a potential of ten, depending on what the circumstances are. And as again, was addressed in the public comment, we often receive reports within or at the end of that five-day period. So if I was at school on Friday, I began feeling ill on Saturday, I take a test on Sunday, get the results on Tuesday, and then report it to the COVID response team. Anyone that was exposed to me on Friday has no quarantine window left, or maybe a day. So we've deprioritized those. We still have the need to notify them. So an email is sent out letting them know you have been exposed, we want you to be aware of that, but no quarantine is required. And that is the email that was mentioned during the public comment. That was a change that we made based on the prioritization that VDH sent out on January twenty-sixth. So we did change that process, and those students who prior to January would have been quarantined for those ten or fourteen or twenty-four days are no longer quarantined because the report comes in too late, but we still have that need to notify them that they were at least exposed so that families can watch for symptoms, monitor their health, et cetera. Go on to the next slide, please. So this is just the second half of that strategy is the notification piece. Just wanted to mention because there is a significant change that I just talked about, about how we're notifying. So originally, we were making individual phone calls to every single person, every positive case, every exposed person, every teacher in the classroom, inquiring about mask use and all kinds of things, and it was a very time intensive process. And when the numbers, obviously, the cases increased so dramatically in January, which is what has led to VDH making their changes as well, it's just not feasible to manage a, make a phone call to every single individual case. We do notify all employees via email. They report their case to us also via email, and then we respond with quarantine and isolation requirements for for them. For the second priority of at-risk students, that is through the COVID response team. That's what we implemented in November. There's a reporting hotline that our technology department was able to get set up for us. We have a whole office at the school board with computers set up and everything so that they all have their own workstation, and as calls come in, they're able to process that. They do make individual phone calls still to those at-risk students that fall under that priority because there is a quarantine and isolation required for those students. They also receive a follow-up automated email with all of the written information for their return. And then the deprioritized populations, those also come through the COVID response team, but they, as I said, only receive the automated email. There's no quarantine or isolation required. I, you know, thinking through the timeline, because we're using that at like day four and later, there is potential that that email could come the afternoon of day four, which would still leave that one day potentially. But it's it's really the the best option we have right now in order to notify those families because there are just so many of them, to get that information to them through the email. If I move on to the next part, which is about the testing options, does anyone have questions about this so far?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bush?
Just want to be clear, are you saying that those who've had close contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID are required or recommended for quarantine? Are we, are we requiring quarantine for those that have had close contact with those that have been identified testing positive for COVID?
Yes.
So we're requiring it, not recommending it?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bush, I have, I guess, a question to follow into that. So so the de, so is the deprioritized contacts, they're simply, they're ones that have fallen outside outside of the like five day window whereby a notification is now obsolete? Is that right?
Essentially, it's, it's your general classroom exposure. So if, if you, if we back up to our last meeting, that the close contact exception in schools is in regards to, has masking as a mitigating factor that has to be in place. We no longer have masking in place in our classrooms for the most part. It is simply not possible for, to expect teachers to be able to, if we had those diagrams, so we would have to call a teacher and ask, did Johnny wear a mask on this day? Did Sally wear a mask on that day? It's just not possible. Prior to that, the assumption, the general assumption was everyone was wearing masks. And so it was much quicker and easier to just confirm. Teachers were, are really, were really, really knew which students had issues with wearing masks consistently incorrectly. But at this point, that's not possible. So not only is it the the outside of that window, but it's the, it's the general classroom setting where we just simply cannot determine which students would have been in close proximity during that timeframe with, with or without a mask, three or six, because it's just too unstable.
Okay. So if it can't, if it can't be identified based on the class situation, whenever those students are notified that they may have been in close contact, but they're not required to quarantine.
Correct.
But if someone is a, if someone is a known close contact and they're notified within the five days, they're still required to quarantine for the
One more time.
So if someone is a known close contact, not like that it's manageable, like not in the situation talked about previously, like with the class, it would be hard to track. If someone is a known close contact, so maybe not a deprioritized person, individual, are they required to quarantine?
If it's, if, yes, if it's at the beginning of the window, if it's not a delayed report, yes.
Okay. And quarantine for
For that
By the five days?
Wherever the five days ends, yes.
Okay. And regardless of vaccination status or?
No, only unvaccinated.
Only unvaccinated.
Correct. And student, the student definition for vaccinated, not to complicate matters, but the adult definition changed in January and you have to be up to date, which includes in most cases, a booster. The student population definition did not change. So any child that is fully vaccinated, regardless of booster status, regardless of the timing of your vaccine, regardless of any of that, is required to.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rolles, do you have a question?
Yes. So last time, Ms. Fisher, thank you for coming for a second time. There's a discussion about, they recently made the decision that quarantine was for five days, but then we're enforcing 10 days because understanding was that for days six to 10, they could still cause a close contact with other students and then we didn't want to have to quarantine them as well. So is that gone now? We're not doing that anymore?
Well, we're still isolating positive cases per, for 10 days. However, if, and I'm going to get to all of that in the last slide. However, if we were to, if you were to be looking at bringing them back on day five, more likely than not, most students would not be, would be deprioritized in that day six through 10. Does that make sense? There could still be exposure, but it would be a lesser priority.
Okay, so.
It would fall under the same, the same pyramid.
After five days, we don't, we don't worry about telling them to quarantine anymore, but so for the folks who are isolated, they come back after, on day six, are we, are we requiring masking for six through 10 or? So doing that?
Any, yes, sir.
And that's symptom free, correct? I just want to make sure that's.
For which? It's all varied.
After the five.
For an exposure, for symptoms. So it's, it's different depending on the circumstance. There's a chart at the end that we can, if you want to move to that. Positive right now is 10 days. We're still at 10 days for a positive case. And that is resolving symptoms, improving symptoms, fever-free for 24 or more hours without medication, which has been the standard return.
Yes, maybe any call, ask a follow-on there. So we are saying, so you were having, it's like 10 days, is that come back after five, I'm asking for days six through 10? Positive cases?
Not for a positive case, no. Positive cases, 10 days.
Still doing 10 days solid.
And if you still have symptoms on day 10, when you return, your mask required.
And so is that, that's the VDH guidance, like, so the five days of CDC right at, right now says if you're positive, you can, can come out of quarantine after five days and wear a mask for days five through 10. And close contacts are aligned with what we talked about earlier, right? That they wouldn't necessarily have to quarantine if they're vaccinated or whatever. So are we saying right now, so we're following the 10 day for the positive case and that's based on?
That's based on what, the information that we had prior to our last school board meeting on the 24th.
So where does?
Since then, two days later, the, the prioritization came out, which further went to the day six through 10 for a positive case that schools should deprioritize contact tracing on day six through 10 for positive cases based on your same pyramid of prioritization. So that has happened in the last.
Right, okay. So that's for the, so that's for the contact tracing, but so for individuals who test positive, they still have to stay out for 10 days regardless?
That's what we're doing right now.
Yes, okay.
On Janu-, as of our last school board meeting, that was the recommended practice because of the additional exposures that coming back on day six through 10 would cause. Two days later, when this, when the VDH came out with their prioritized contact tracing, that is when that was expanded and explained further that schools should, that should be one of the groups that is deprioritized. Is that day six through 10 close contacts?
Understood.
So we're, so we have not changed anything from our last meeting. All the information that we had at that point is what we had and we're still doing that. That is for, you know, at the pleasure of the board tonight, if that's something that you all wish to do, but we haven't changed our process, no.
Right, okay. But so to, I have additional questions, but Ms. Hawk, you can.
My, my, my question, I think was part of your question is that, so VDH was the source of that of that original information at the January 26th meeting. So that was VDH information.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So is that to say we could reduce that to five days for positive cases? You're saying that that's like, I mean, we say that that's at the pleasure of the board. Right now, the guidance, so you said that was the guidance prior to the last meeting and then since then, it has been deprioritized?
Correct. So one of the reasons why we maintain that 10 days is because of the, the close contacts that would result from returning on day six through 10 because of no masking, et cetera. At this point, that would be deprioritized.
Prioritized anyway.
You're still going to be close contacts. There are still going to be situations where it's going to cause exposures and students are going to be quarantined. Take a, we're not in football season, but take football, for example. A student returning on day six from a positive is going to expose other members of the football team. They will have to be quarantined. So, but in a general classroom setting, they would be deprioritized. So when you look at the population where it falls in, does that make sense?
Kind of. So the, so our extracurricular activities?
So if you go, can you go back to the pyramid? I mean, again, the, the board can decide whatever, however you all want to proceed and will adjust accordingly. But so if you would, if, if you were to decide to change the positive cases to 10 day, or from 10 days to five days, and those students now come back on day six, if there is then exposure under one of these higher prioritized environments, we would still be contact tracing that. We are, we would still be making notice and identifying those people?
Outbreaks in the board.
For, under, correct, under these categories.
Not in general though.
Not a general classroom.
Gen, right. And, okay. And the gen, general, they would return at five days and those who were in contact with them may be notified, but would be deprioritized and would not need to, would not be required to quarantine.
So my class might not be notified when I come back to my class, but if I'm on the football team and I am not able to remain distanced from them, then we, we would have to notify those because that's one of the higher risk activities.
Okay, okay.
I shouldn't say have to. We would notify them because they're under one of the higher risk activities.
Okay. Yes, that, okay, that, that makes sense.
A lot.
Do we make any exceptions for, say, like, any of our more vulnerable students? I don't know, they fall into that ask at-risk student category, but like, say, any of our special needs students who maybe have trouble wearing a mask or something and then end up getting quarantined more regularly? Like, do we make any exceptions on an individual basis for students to not be required to quarantine based on their, say, difficulties wearing a mask or something?
Yes, it is very individualized though and, and really kind of complicated to get into because we have different classroom settings where there is no masking. But the teachers have other, they're able to distance or they're able to, you know, there's other things in place that kind of negate that anyway. And we've been doing this now for over a year. So we just look at those individual environments and see where we are. You know, the special education department has been wonderful to provide other instructional, you know, support if needed for those students that, that do test positive, do have to isolate and continue to do so.
Okay. So any of my colleagues have further comments?
Yes, I do. And, and I'm not sure. I just lost my place. My, my concern is for students who are compromised and staff who are compromised. We, we have several staff members of, at various levels who are undergoing chemo treatments. We have students who are undergoing chemo treatments. It, it is not as simple as just let's get past this. And, and I am very concerned about our, our staff of all descriptions, everyone who plays a role in our, in the operation of our division. And that includes our custodians, that includes our bus drivers, and our students who are compromised. Is there, is there any VDH guidance about those individuals and how to protect them given the current situation?
There is. Within the VDH and CDC guidance, when, when they low, and it's, it's been there all along, but it was emphasized when they decreased these periods. There are disclaimers, for lack of a better word, that say that these reduced windows should only apply to mild cases of COVID, to patients that are not at high risk, to communities that are not in high trend. So there are all these qualifying factors. And that's one of the reasons why. So if you think about our, what we were doing before versus what we're doing now, particular to that deprioritized group, which is the vast majority of our population. Prior to now, everyone was being contacted individually with individual windows of return and tracked accordingly. We couldn't continue that. We could have gone to the far side of the other side and said, we're just not going to notify you at all. But there are a group of students, a group of teachers that do have medical conditions, family at home that they, that they're concerned about, et cetera, that we can't possibly know all of that about. And so that's why we felt it's important to still notify those people in the best way we could, we could figure out to notify such large quantities of people quickly is through the automated email to, to each of those people. So that families, they know their own, you know, individual needs. They know now that they've been exposed and they can decide what they need to do about it. We have had families that come back to us and say, I know it says he can come back tomorrow. I'm not comfortable with that. I'm going to wait and take him to the doctor, get him tested since he has been exposed and dad's at home. You know, just had open heart surgery, whatever the case may be. And so that allows them that ability to, to make that decision. So, you know, we tried to compromise based on the resources that we have.
Thank you.
Okay. So I don't know if anyone has a desire to entertain a motion, but I would be amenable to reducing the quarantine time to five, or I guess the isolation to five days for the positive cases. Since that is aligned with CDC guidance and others. So I'll leave that there.
That's true. Can I just clarify? We still have slides left, right? Okay. So I, I think I'd just like to hear the rest of you.
Certainly. I just wanted to put my opinion out there. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
Sure. Okay. So the other strategies to talk about tonight are all about testing. There is a program called Vista. We've actually been working with them since probably about August and really got started in November. And it's a partnership, of course, between VDH and VDOE. It provides access to testing in various capacities, as well as all of the funding for staff and supplies, all grant funded, no cost to, to us. There are three testing options, diagnostic, pooled, and test to stay, and I'll expand on those on the next slide. With those requirements, essentially, we have to be able to identify who is eligible for testing because it varies by test. We have to receive parental consent prior to testing any minor. That goes without saying. And then, of course, we have to follow all applicable FERPA and HIPAA privacy laws. There's also a, some data reporting that we have to provide back to them just in regards to the numbers of tests we're performing in each of the programs. Just to support the, the grant effort. You can go on to the next slide. So I've broken down as briefly as I could, the three different options for testing. Honestly, these documents are probably 30 or 40 pages long each, so there's a lot that's not up there, but this is the basics. Diagnostic testing, we started in November. That's what's happening in the conference room at the school board office, as well as the contact tracing. Employees started November 1, and we just started with students a couple of weeks ago, although we did pilot some students back in the fall as well. Diagnostic testing is a, Binax now is the, is the brand. There's a telemedicine appointment that you have with eMed that certifies the test results and you get your results in 15 minutes. You make an appointment online through our COVID response team and get your results and that, you know, obviously if it's positive, you would fall under those protocols. And then the negative test returns you to school based on why you're there, whether it was symptoms or confirmed exposures. That's the diagnostic. Again, we've been doing that for several months now. Questions about diagnostic? Nope?
Ms. Fisher, could you explain phase one and phase two?
Sure. And it looks like, it looks like the graph got out of sorts there. Phase one was employees. We started with employees on November 1. Phase two were our at-risk students and we just began with those, with students on February 1. We did pilot with students back in the fall. It was, it's quite, it was a cumbersome process, so we wanted to work through it before we brought students in. But now we're pretty comfortable with it. And so students come in with their, with their parents for that. Okay, so pooled or screening testing. This is also part of Vista, part of the original Vista grant. Again, phase one is employees and then phase two would be at-risk students. We have not started pooled or screening testing yet, but we're ready to begin. We were just notified on Friday that our vendor has been, we've been reassigned to a different vendor. And so we have to kind of step back and redo some of the procedures. But otherwise, we're ready to go with that. Pooled screening essentially is schools can identify any group cohort that they would like to. Initially, the conversation in the summer from, from Vista was, you know, regarding vaccination status or higher risk activities and those sorts of things. It's become much broader at this point where they're, they're really opening it up to really any population. It brings the opportunity for you to register for a test on a weekly basis at your school location. As an example, the preschool As an example, the preschool and school board employees may be assigned Monday. If you want to be tested on Monday, you register to be tested, and you can be tested every Monday just for your own information and knowledge and for whatever reason you you wish to be tested. It does require that you have no symptoms and no known exposure. So it's for the general population, a screening test that you simply just, it's a resource for the community to really lessen the burden on healthcare facilities. It is a lab-based PCR. The vendor comes onsite, does the test with the person. Cool, it's called pool testing because, so the school board, as an example, you all would each do 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 a swab, and then all your swabs get put together and be, they're all tested at one time. And if that is negative, that means you're all negative. You don't have to do anything more. So that was just, it was they would be tested one time to determine that eight people were negative. If it turns out positive, then they divide it into eight samples, and each of you is individually tested to determine who made it positive, and then that person is notified. So it's it's to really reduce the resources necessary by grouping them together in one sample. But then they are able to pull them out individually if it becomes positive to determine who that was. And again, all of this is completely voluntary. It's completely optional and just resources for the community. And that's pooled testing. And then the last one, test to stay initially was a completely separate program. It was outside of Vista. It has now been incorporated into Vista for reasons unknown to me. Test to stay is only available to students, and that's part of the part of the program. It's for any student that has a confirmed exposure but remains asymptomatic. They do ask to prioritize unvaccinated just for resources because the whole point of this is to stay. If you are vaccinated, then you get to stay anyway. But they 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 have said that if the resources are available, you can certainly test vaccinated individuals because there is some breakthrough cases after exposure. It's the same test as the diagnostic test, results in 15 minutes, and it requires consecutive testing over the course of five days. The procedure we have developed currently that we're ready to put in place is the very first appointment would be at the school board office, similar to the diagnostic appointment. So we can go over the process, explain the instructions, get you logged in and set up on the dashboard, and then we give you at-home tests for you to do the, over the next, course of the next five days. And test to stay is a program is to provide families and schools an option for not quarantining as long as you remain asymptomatic after an exposure. So if you agree to sign up for test to stay and you test daily, then your quarantine is, no quarantine is required. Questions on testing?
I have a question, Ms. Fisher. So you said, so the diagnostic phase, so you said we've implemented that and started. I'm sorry, I guess, so the status of this, like, where do we, so diagnostic, we've begun, and what are the plans for the remaining, like, the other tests?
We have the test. We got our test to stay tests in, I think, last week. So we're ready to begin with the approval, you know, of the board to implement that because it would change the quarantining recommendations. And then pooled screening, we're ready for employees to begin that, except our vendor got changed on Friday. So we have to wait and make sure that there aren't any changes to our procedures with that. But we would be ready to begin that as well.
Okay. Any additional questions? Have I got it right?
Right offhand. Right offhand, do you know how many students tested positive this week?
I do not have that data. I apologize. I have not updated the dashboard today.
Thank you.
Well, I guess that's in addition to that. Do you have any, within the last few weeks, any one-week period that you could give a data for about how many students in a week's period?
I mean, I.
Maybe two weeks ago?
I could pull up the dashboard. I I can tell you anecdotally that cases are certainly declining from where they were in January. They were astronomical. We we really could not keep up, and so the prioritization was was really necessary. But we are able to now, so they are declining. I can tell you that. But as far as the past week, I I don't have that with me tonight.
What about two weeks ago? Do you have that?
Means I could look it up on the website.
So I guess this, well, she isn't readily available.
Similar question, if she did, I can understand not having this weeks, but maybe two weeks ago would still be valuable for the board to hear what it was two weeks ago.
Certainly.
So we, so.
It won't take me to it.
So we do all have access on our laptops. If you're on the Wi-Fi, you can look up the dashboard, right?
And and do note that the data is a week behind.
Right, I understand.
Are you able to pull that up on the website? If you go to the main page, it's the very first, very first button, I think. Because I can't pull it up on my phone. While he's pulling it up, do you have any other questions about the testing?
So I I would just, okay, I'll save my question.
There it is. Yeah, I'm not, my eyesight's not so good here.
Jeez. The table was getting too big, so I had to cut it off, but but I don't believe that's. It should go through the third post.
Okay. All right, hold it still for a second. Okay, so positive students at King George was six, okay?
Mr. Vance, if you go to the very bottom, the division.
Yeah.
Is, there's a tally at the at the bottom, which might be.
Total positive.
Staff positive, 33 students.
Students with 33 out of the whole student body, okay.
Students quarantined due to exposure outside of school, but only four ends up.
The key one I wanted to look at is student positive, that 33, that was just for my benefit. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vance.
And I can, when I put that up tomorrow, it it would have been up this afternoon, but I just didn't have a chance. I can send it to you all separately so that you know that it's it's been posted.
But it has been declining, is what you said, right?
It has been.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Any other questions, you can move on.
And then the last slide, really just is is a comparison between us and a couple other divisions in the area. I was waiting to hear back from a couple more and hadn't yet. So I just tried to compile this together to show you where we are in comparison. And this is as of last Tu- Tuesday or Wednesday. So positive cases, yes, we are quarantining for 10 days. Two divisions are quarantining for five and returning on day six with a mask. Another division is still quarantining positives for 10, positive students for 10 days, employees for five, with employees required to wear an N95 upon their return. Symptom, for symptoms, we're all, we're all pretty much the same, a return on day six. After a negative test, mask required. If there's no test or no alternate diagnosis of some other illness, et cetera, then the return goes to day 11. Exposures, again, a return on day six with the negative test and a mask. If no test, then day 11. And then, of course, we're pending the test to stay option. That would obviously change that. Most divisions in our region are doing the same, are very similar prioritization of contact tracing with the the at-risk populations. Two divisions are still requiring masks for everybody, so that's not applicable to the return. And then King George, as well as, I believe it was Stafford, I apologize, I had the names up at the top, are requiring masks upon return, even though they're mask optional in general. We do, I did make a note there, we do have K and 95s available for staff members. We actually purchased those back in January, not knowing, you know, what was going to be required moving forward, and supplies tend to be low, so we wanted to make sure we had those. And then for testing, we actually are the only division right now that have all of the testing options available to us. The three that I have up there have none. I do believe Spotsy is doing some testing, but they were one of the divisions that was not able to get back to me in time for this.
Ms. Fisher, I have a question again. So on the first, so the King George, so our column, so it says for, let's say, exposures, return on day six with negative test and mask, return on day 11 if no test. So does that still apply for the prioritize, like, the de, or sorry, the deprioritized population? I guess I thought if you were deprioritized and were exposed, you didn't have to, or you didn't have to quarantine, is that true?
So this would only be for those populations.
The prioritized.
Prioritized.
Okay.
Which couldn't, could include, as the speaker earlier said, you know, a day or two at the end that still falls within that window, but it's simply an email as a notification. And if that's something, again, that if they're completely out of the, we still provide the email to notify them, even if their window has ended for a couple of reasons. One, because the 10 days is still like the gold standard. Two, so you can monitor for for symptoms through that window, and because the masks are required through day 10.
Okay. So just to clarify, so if someone is a close contact and they're notified, say, on day three, they are required to quarantine for the remaining two days, or they can choose to?
They they are required to. Because that's early in the.
Five-day window.
Right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm trying real hard to.
I know, I know it's a lot.
Questions, there's so many scenarios, and I don't want to say the wrong thing, but yes, they they are.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Fisher, how would the test to stay impact our status? If we, say, say we we move to a five-day quarantine, how how would it impact us if we did the test to stay?
Okay. So honestly, regardless of whether we move to five-day positive or not, test to stay would impact anyone that's exposed, whether it's during those days, six through 10, or prior to, if it was within, you know, the shorter, within the early part of the window. Those, anyone opting to participate in test to stay would not be required to quarantine. They would instead test.
That's your.
Ms. Rolls?
Ms. Fisher, so I see two divisions you have up there are showing that folks who test positive and come back after five days, you have an idea whether they're considering folks that come back for day six through 10 as still positive in terms of exposing other folks that they come in contact with, as we are thinking we have to do.
Sure. So my my assumption, I didn't ask this question specifically, but my assumption is based on the updates, the update we received following our last meeting, would be that they're prioritizing those just as we would be because our prioritization is very similar, and that's where that change came in the prioritization from VDH to deprioritize those students. So I would assume that they have deprioritized those students because that was part.
So they wouldn't count them as exposure, as exposure.
That's my assumption.
Now, at last being, one of the things that it asked for was the information you're getting that was causing you to consider those folks exposed for, you know, day six to 10.
Correct.
Yes, thank you for providing that. I see that was from December, and it seems like a lot has changed since December. So and I've seen a lot of guidance since then, none of it has suggested that we have to do that. So have you had that reaffirmed since then, or is is, is my question cleared?
I I think it's clear, but maybe my answer wasn't clear. Up until January 26, the information we had was that those those students would be exposed, and they would be close contacts on January 26, which at least two of these divisions have had school board meetings since then, which is what has led to their changes to five days. Because if you recall, at the previous meeting, more divisions were at 10 days, just as we were. They have since adjusted accordingly because that is no longer a priority, is that day six through 10 for positive cases returning.
So you're still acting, as you said, as if they would expose them to days six or 10, but you're you're wanting a school board decision to change that policy?
I'm not changing that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Any other questions?
Oh, is that, that concludes your slides? Yes, that was it, okay. All right, yes, thank you, that was a lot. So does the board have any further discussion?
Yes.
I have more questions, too.
More questions.
I have no more questions. Is that what you were asking, questions or discussion? Where, I'm sorry.
Discussion, question.
We, more questions first, if if I may.
Okay, for.
Ms. Fisher.
I see, okay, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Fisher, last time we discussed the percentage of quarantined students who actually get sick, and I know we haven't been able to get data to grab that out. But part of that was to ask the VDH at the meeting whether that's something that they will provide. Was that question asked, and what was their answer?
It was asked, and I I apologize, I believe, I thought I'd answered that via email. It's not data that they maintain. They don't mean, they don't maintain that. And that's an individual, that's a very individualized data point that unless it's part of an outbreak.
Okay, and just trying to understand how we don't have that. So I saw the forms you use to collect the data, so is the process that you take that form, you enter into a VDH website, and then throw the form away, and so then we don't have that anymore?
To some extent, yes. There, there's not a website, but we do provide it to them electronically. And then most of those forms are shredded once the the case, the case is closed.
Okay, so I didn't, I don't think I understood this before, but it appears that those, the dashboard, where we get the compiled information for the whole division in a school, we don't make those. We don't, that's, VDH takes the data, we give them, and they create that, is that true?
The dashboard on our website?
Right.
Nope, that's our data.
Okay, so so at some point, we're compiling that then?
So the form that I sent you, that had the three-page, five-page interview form, has a lot of information that is provided in lesser extent now to VDH. We glean from that the student, the, whether it's an exposure at home, whether it's an exposure at school, whether it's a positive case, et cetera, just those distinct pieces of information. We don't, we don't keep a a running, we don't keep a running database of each individual student and their 48-hour previous window of exposure and their 14-day beyond window of exposure, and every single individual that might have been exposed in that 14 days ongoing in a running record to connect those dots. That's not something that we we do, we don't have the data for it. VDH doesn't have the data for it, that's why it's not a metric that they can provide. It's just not data that we that we have.
So the dashboard, we we make that?
The dashboard on the website is correct, our specific data. That's not anything from VDH. That's our our in-house data.
Okay, but so when we build that, that we know, we have, see five students are sick, we could go back and say, which students are sick? Or at what point is that information lost?
One more time?
So for instance, if we see there's there's five students who are currently isolated at, say, Sealston, we would know the names of those five students. And we know the week that they were sick because it's in that column, right?
Correct.
So.
But we wouldn't have, we wouldn't necessarily have 14-day prior, prior data. But we wouldn't have, we wouldn't necessarily have 14-day prior, prior data of if they were, if that individual student was exposed, because once their data went up, their individual data no longer exists. So once the calculations are created for the dashboard, it's no longer individualized. It's
So you get, you get a total, and then you throw away the papers, and at the point, we don't know who those five individuals are anymore by name?
Yes, the, the papers are the first thing to go. We maintain a spreadsheet with just the specific pieces of information that I need to create that spreadsheet. So the, the paper, the interview happens, the information's provided to VDH, and then it is input, just those key pieces. Was the person positive? Were they exposed? Were they exposed at school, exposed at home? Were they symptomatic, or whatever they were? Just those key points are in the spreadsheet. And there's, there's nothing else attached to that.
And the way you know, you don't double count people, is you just enter in a piece of paper at a time, throw it away, and then do the next one until they're all gone, and then it's anonymous at that point? Just hoping that there be some way that we could analyze the data. So, sounds like not. So thank you.
And I'm not familiar, I don't know of any school that's doing it. I mean, when you, it's, it's not a simple one-to-one as it may seem. It's a quite extensive process that it would, it would entail to, to be able to do that.
I believe, I, I don't know if there's another way to try to get, maybe not answer your specific question about our locality, but is there another proxy? Is there any kind of national data, or anything that you could, we could find that might at least enlighten, you know, where I think your question is? I mean, that may be a next step. If not local data available, then perhaps we can research to find any kind of national data that exists that could serve as a proxy to address, because I assume what you're looking for is of the kids that have been quarantined across the history of this, how many eventually then were identified as positive cases? Is that correct? So, again, if we, we don't have that available here locally, even regionally, I assume, could we not then look to see if there's any kind of national data, any other studies that have been done that, you know, could at least serve as a proxy perhaps for your, your question?
So I actually have been looking for that information. I looked at it for it in the fall when Mr. Collins actually inquired the same. And again, when Mr. Rolls asked about it a couple of weeks ago, I could not find a single data point that was maintained by any entity specific to that question. As I tried to explain in my email, it, there, there are a couple of research studies, there are certainly people that are asking that question, but the explanation is much more elaborate as to why that number doesn't exist. Similar to what I've explained. It's, the window is so broad, and the task to do that is, is just so great. I, I haven't found anyone that is doing that. There was one research study that I found where they, every exposure was required to test as part of this research study, and they had percents for that, but it ranged anywhere from 15% to 51% in various cohorts. So that's the only thing I could find that was anywhere close to the question they were asking. That was a controlled research study.
Yeah, I think I was going to ask, I'm disappointed that you think at the VDH level, they would bring their resources together to analyze all this for us. We provide them all the data, because we, do we provide names when we provide them the data as well?
We, we do for the positive cases, and then early on for the exposures, we did as well. But as we've transitioned out of this, they are no longer receiving most exposure names, only some.
Okay, so Mr. Rolls, I think we've exhausted that topic. So I know others on the board have some questions or comments. Mr. Bush?
She's finished. I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions for her.
Okay. So I think Mr. Bush, or sorry, Mr. Rolls, we have, this has said to been a repeated question, and I, Ms. Fisher keeps telling us that the information is not available, and I don't know that continually asking the question is going to get
Other questions.
Other questions. Okay, go ahead.
So I did follow up with the Sheriff of Faukeer County, since they did go ahead and do with contact tracing, just to look into that. And they said they had been hoping as well for VDH to track, look into this for them, been asking since last fall. So then they just took it upon themselves, start tracking the data around like November through December, and saw that they really seen about 97, 98% of, actually 97, 98% of the students who went into quarantine never got sick. So that's the basis of how much they said, right, this contact tracing is not making sense. So my question is, you look around, see a lot of things that other counties are doing, different divisions, or even, you know, VDH talking about not doing the initial tracing anymore, and they just trace it for outbreaks. So just want to see what the continuum of options are. Could they say that? They're only going to track outbreaks, but I don't know exactly what that means. Do you have an idea of like, the continuum of, you know, we're doing what we're doing, we're tracking every case to tracking nothing? Like, what are the options in between? You speak to that all, like outbreaks and whatnot?
Um, sure. As you said, you can do nothing, contract, track, trace, nobody. Except for, I assume the positive cases. I'm not, I, I know Faukeer, lots of divisions have changed what they're doing. I don't know Faukeer explicitly, but I would assume that they're still isolating their, their positive cases and such.
Yes, ma'am.
And continue contact tracing every case if you have the means. We certainly don't have that mean, that, the means to do that. So we are, I feel kind of in the middle. And according to our region, we're really kind of where everyone else in the region is, we prioritize based on the resources that we have, and we continue to notify those families that, and there's those priority groups that we feel need to be notified.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed it before. So we're not tracing every case anymore, so who are we not tracking?
The, the general classroom setting that we've de-prioritized, those positive cases that come in at the end of their quarantine window. We're, and I think there's some confusion about what contact tracing really is.
Yeah, I would love to have that.
So the five-page document that I sent you via email is the contact tracing interview. It's a very extensive process where you interview the positive case, you walk through their entire day during their window of exposure from 48 hours prior to their positive test or symptom onset through the very last day, minute that they were in school. Every interaction, was it three to six feet? Were you wearing a mask? Was it more than 15 minutes? Was there physical contact? Was there exposure to respiratory fluids? Were you coughed on, sneezed on, shared a drink, et cetera? And then through those students or teachers, you try, if you can, to confirm on the other side of it, that, that those interactions existed. And those students are then identified as close contacts, and they are notified to quarantine. We are not doing that anymore, except for those prioritized cases. The at-risk students, our employees, which the process is much quicker with an employee. They know for the most part where they were, who they interacted with, what small groups they had, et cetera. So that's much quicker. And we've been doing that fairly seamlessly with employees. And then, of course, outbreaks. Everyone else, we're not doing any of that. We are looking at the class, we are notifying those students within that window via email that, hey, there was an exposure. This is the information, this is what your timeframe would be, et cetera. But we're not doing the extensive interviewing, et cetera.
Just to be clear, so if we have a student test positive, we're not necessarily getting everybody who was within the six feet, you know, exposed, having to quarantine?
They are not having to quarantine, no.
Does that make sense to everybody?
It did.
Yes.
It depends on the, on the circumstances of the positive cases. Window, timeframe, the environments that they are in, whether they're a student in this population versus that population, whether they have extracurricular activities that have that physical contact, they're a wrestler, as an example, they're in season right now, that contact is happening every day. So we would contact trace that, to the extent we could, versus someone who doesn't participate in any of that, comes to school just, you know, as a regular, in a regular classroom setting, et cetera. Those would receive just the automated notice. And those are hundreds of students that receive the automated, which is not in our dashboard anymore, because it's, it's a huge change in our process, so.
All right. At this time, is there any additional discussion?
Discussion now?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
All right, I think that we need to limit the learning loss, kind of stop the bleeding. I think we need to update or change our COVID-19 response specifically as it relates to our approach to contact tracing and quarantines. The Virginia Department of Health, as we've mentioned, on January 25th and subsequent notices that they've sent out are ending contact tracing in most circumstances as the current variant, Omicron is now the most common. COVID-19 variant is spreading quickly. It is not possible or, or productive to track every case, as was been mentioned. Instead, the VDH is shifting the focus to following up outbreaks in high-risk settings, as was mentioned. And I think that these efforts in terms of contact tracings are just no longer sustainable. It's just, I'm sorry, it's just too much, too much learning loss with, I don't think it's viable anymore, to be honest. I think that the quarantining, post-contacts has placed such a burden on the staff. And Mary Fisher, you've done a fabulous job. Please, this is no negative comment about you. Our students and their families, and it's just so many issues. I was just looking at Stafford, which was mentioned, and I really like what Stafford has just done at their last board meeting. If I can just read this. It says the required isolation period for students and staff who test positive for the virus has been reduced to five days. The quarantine period for those who are close contact of a positive case has been reduced to five days, and there's no longer required, but recommended. The staff and families will continue to be notified when there's a positive case of COVID-19 in the classroom, but the school division will no longer conduct contact tracing for every individual case. I want to hear everybody first. I, I could make a motion now, but I think it's respectful to hear other people before a motion is made. That's just my opinion. So, but yes, that, if not, another motion's not made, I will probably make the motion that will follow pretty close to what Stafford has just done, because I think it will cause so many more students to have, be in the classroom. And I do not believe that it will increase the number, significantly increase the number of students getting COVID.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. Ms. Hock?
Uh, no comments. Right. I, I, I understand about the Stafford. I have read the Stafford and, and, and others as well that, that have moved in that similar direction, and as much as we can control the process, I think that states where we need to go. I don't know what this does to our Vista grant, or if that's allowed within the grant, to discontinue contact tracing except for positive cases.
Thank you, Ms. Hock. Dr. Cutright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've heard from 100% of my constituents, staff members and parents. And they have requested that we rescind contact tracing, and that's what all, I'm here to represent my constituents. So I'm here to also say, if a staff member or a student tests positive for COVID-19 but has no symptoms, symptoms, they should isolate or stay home for five days, five days. And like Mr. Bush, I also looked at the other sub, the school divisions, Stafford in particular. They have the same policy that I'm talking about, and according to the guidelines, they recommend that students stay home for five days if they've tested positive. If you have no symptoms, or your symptoms are revolving after, resolving after five days, you can leave your house or continue to wear your mask for five additional days. And Stafford said, in particular, COVID-19 mitigation procedures that include reducing isolation and quarantine time and limiting contact tracing is most important. The required period for students and staff who test positive for the virus has been reduced to five days. Now, I looked at the data two, two weeks ago, and according to the data from King George County Schools I reviewed, there were less than 1% of our student population testing positive for COVID. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cutright. Mr. Rolls?
Well, Dr. Cutright, I've overwhelmingly heard from constituents that are concerned about the learning loss, the impacts to the children's education from all the quarantine, the extensive quarantines, multiple, often, in the same school year. So I definitely would like to see that rolled back to something that's more practicable at, at a minimum. Then the isolation to five days and come back per the VDH guidance, and not want to consider students exposed that they come into contact with.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rolls. So I, Ms. Philman?
I just have a quick question. How, like, I know it's been mentioned, using like a mask mandate after, like, if you were to have them come back after five days, there's been the idea of having them be required to wear a mask after that, for that next five days. How do you plan on enacting that mask mandate when there's teachers in the building that don't even wear them? Like, how are you going to tell a student that's, you're saying you can come back to school, but you have to wear your mask? Everyone else around you doesn't have to wear a mask. That, I'm just curious, how are you going to? It doesn't seem feasible to me, being inside that building every day. The teachers aren't going to be able to enforce that, and probably won't be willing to.
Well, if I can answer that question, it's probably not feasible.
Dr. Benson, were you going to add anything?
No, I was just going to state that it's a, it's an opportunity to return sooner than students certainly do right now. So with that opportunity comes a responsibility to follow what's being asked of that individual. So I, I guess your, your, your premise is one that, yes, it can be problematic to enforce and to, to watch every minute, but I think there comes a point where you know, students understand they have a responsibility that with that opportunity comes that responsibility. And if we find a student that's abusing it openly, you know, then like any other issue, we would just work with that family, work with that student to correct the behavior.
So, so, so finally, I am, I think, in support of most of the major points that Mr. Bush began this part of the discussion with. With the exception of the contact tracing piece, so I think that, I, like, I'm, I agree with the five-day return and the quarantine notification, but not necessarily making it requirement. I think that contact tracing could be, and should be, continued, and it can be done without an impact to the students that choose, basically like those that are not in favor of contact tracing, aren't, don't need to, to worry about it essentially, right? So as Ms. Fisher mentioned, there are families that want to be notified that they've been in close contact, because they may choose to stay home, because they have their own concerns. I think there was an example earlier about, of, of student who, you know, students that may be eligible to return but do not return. And I think to do away with all contact tracing is doing a disservice to those members of the community who do still want to know. So I'm in favor, I think, in support of all of that, with the exception of contact tracing, which I think should and needs to be maintained for that purpose.
Yeah, second comment. Just, I know there's a concern that has already been mentioned with a few teachers that may have compromised systems, those with cancer and those kinds of things. I think there's something that's important to also discuss is that there is, for those who have that kind of concern, or even students that, you know, they have the KN95 mask, but then they also have the whole shield that can be worn, which really does not quite eliminate, become very close to eliminating any concern, and obviously, the, the division can't recommend or even provide, necessarily provide those things, but for those teachers or students that may have a compromised situation, a recommendation that they wear the well-fitted KN95 masks, and what is that called? I can't, the shield? What's, the shield? Yeah. And the shield, when you add the shield with a KN95 mask, with the research that I looked at, it is very effective. And I'm only saying that going in the direction where it looks like we're going as a board could be a concern for some of those people that have compromised health situations. And I think, yeah, that's true, but they do have an option. And it's not fair for the other 99-point-some percent of the students and to be able to be in the classroom and have as much learning as we can provide. So I just wanted to make that statement. I'm ready to make a motion, but maybe somebody else would like to make more comments. I guess I don't feel appropriate to make a motion until I make sure everybody's kind of discussed this. That's just me.
I think we've discussed plenty. Go ahead and make a motion.
All right. I would like to make a motion that the King George County All right. I would like to make a motion that the King George County School Division require isolation for students and staff who test positive for the virus or five, be reduced to five days, or just simply say five days. To also that the quarantine period.
To Bush, may I ask that we handle them individually?
Oh, sure. Go ahead. That's fine. Okay. So the first one is that the required isolation period for students and staff who test positive for the virus be for five days only and can return on the sixth day.
You want that to be students and staff or just students? Because I believe they're a different role.
Students, I'm sorry. I did say students and staff. Let's just deal with the students. Staff is another question. So let me change it one more time to make sure it's understood. That the isolation period for students who test positive for the virus be isolated for five days and return on the sixth day.
All right. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Unless there's a need for further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right. Continue. Mr. Bush?
Okay. That the quarantine period for those who are in close contact of a positive case be reduced to five days, but no longer required but recommended.
Quarantine for close contacts be reduced to five days and be?
Recommended but not required.
But not required. All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Yeah, there's the third one. And it's similar to Stafford. That this would include the Stafford, and the staff and families will continue to be notified when there is a positive case of COVID-19 in the classroom. But as a division, we will no longer conduct contact tracing for individual cases.
I second the motion.
All?
Ms. Ranko, did you get that? I spoke fast.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. I saw you writing frantically.
I'd like to clarify that, too.
Pardon, Dr. Benson?
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just wanted to clarify, you know, the information that was, we had those high-risk activities and those groups, is that your intention for the general population outside of that high-risk group? Or is it complete everybody, no matter the context?
Complete everybody, no matter the context.
So please state that again. So staff and families continue to be notified?
Staff and families will continue to be notified when there is a positive case of COVID-19 in the classroom. But as a division, we will no longer conduct individual contact tracing.
All in favor?
What do you want to say? It needs to be seconded and first.
Oh, sorry. I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay, because of the contact tracing. I don't know. Are you eliminating all contact tracing? That's probably out of order, but.
Well, I think in the one just before, that those are in close contact of a positive case, obviously they'll be notified, but it won't be required for them to.
But that's separate from contact tracing and quarantine.
Yes, yes. I misunderstood.
I think she, I was just clarifying for.
Thank you. So I vote yea.
Does that make number two moot? I assume if you're not contracting contact tracing at all, you wouldn't have anybody to notify as a.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, it doesn't make sense.
You're right. So. And we eliminated that second one. I know that we already voted for it and just simply.
I think you need to amend your third one.
Okay, amend the third one then?
Are you asking just to notify through the classroom? We can do that without.
I just think that everybody in the classroom would like to know if somebody has COVID.
Yeah.
That's the bottom line.
And the staff?
And the staff. So, yeah, then the staff and families will be noted, will continue to be notified when there is a positive case of COVID-19 in the classroom.
I think that's fine.
So the, do we have a second?
Second.
So I would ask or comment, so I still, I still think that doesn't meet the intent of the second one. The quarantine for close contacts be reduced to five days. I don't, they still are in conflict because you're not, you won't be able to notify close contacts if all you're doing is tracking positives in classrooms.
Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
There's so much intricacy to this. I need to make sure that I fully understand what you're saying. I got the first one, students positive. As far as close contact, if the second motion, we would have to contact trace in order to know who we are notifying and to say five days is recommended but not required. We also must continue to monitor for outbreaks, which requires contact tracing. There are certain pieces we, and I think contact tracing is being used differently than really what it means. There's, there are still parts of it that we have to continue to do in some, some form or fashion to.
But it's limited to just those contexts and groups that were identified on that chart.
Correct.
So is there any way, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Ms. Fisher, but, you know, prior to the prioritization, we had 100%, we were doing all of it, the whole pie. With just the pieces that we are doing now, can you even estimate what percentage of that original pie we've reduced to with the prioritization?
Less than 20? Because we have hundreds in that deprioritized group, because we still have to send the emails. So we still have like a list of emails that goes out versus whatever was on the dashboard. So I would, I would say it's less than 20%, and that's, that's probably high.
I don't know if that helps to give a, just how much we were doing and now how it's been reduced significantly.
So it sounds like the workload has been significantly reduced. And I believe the, you began your point with the trying to limit learning loss and all of that. And all of that, we can keep the contact tracing in place as it is and not induce further learning loss. Like all of that will still be improved with the two changes we just made and keeping contact tracing as it is, which is reduced, as we just heard.
But the key would be not required, recommended but not required.
In the previous motion?
Yes, yes.
Certainly, certainly.
And that's for, that's for all groups, not just the?
Yes, yes. That is the intent of the motion. And then the other one is just that the class, the people in the class would be notified that there was a COVID case.
Not, not in the previous motion. That was notifying close contacts. It's a different.
This is the third motion, is that the staff and families will be notified when there is a positive case in the classroom.
Okay, just the classroom, no other settings?
It doesn't supersede the first, the second motion, though.
No.
Right? You're adding this.
I'm adding, I just think, yes, I'm adding this.
Classroom.
Do we, do we want, that's adding more burden, removing, notify more people. Do we want to do that?
This, this may, this may be the same group that we notify anyway. Because we're not confirming with the, I'm sorry, I'm trying to, trying to think through this. We're not interviewing teachers individually for the, so I believe that's already what we're doing, is just providing that notification.
Okay, then forget it. I take away my third motion and just stay with the first two.
Okay, got it.
Madam Chair, one thing for Ms. Fisher, while she's here. So I'm trying to think how this helps you, like, so doing this for just outbreaks only? Can you explain a little bit how that's different? You're still tracing everybody to be able to identify outbreaks, right?
Well, I guess that's what I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Right.
Because if we don't do any contact tracing at all, if we just notify the entire classroom, et cetera, then essentially everything else is finished. There's no, there's no testing, there's no phone calls, there's no outbreak monitoring. There's like, there's nothing, because we don't have the information we need. And so if there's no contact tracing at all, then there's no anything else. And so I just need to know if that's, that's the intent, or if.
So that is not the intent, based on the first two motions?
Okay. The first motion is fine. That makes, that's not, that's simple. So we would still need to contact trace and notify families that they were in close contact and provide the recommendation to quarantine for five days, but it is not required.
Yes.
Okay. And then we're already doing what you were suggesting for the third one, so that's moot at this point. Okay, any, anything regarding testing, any other things?
I was supposed to be like, are we only going to notify for outbreaks? I guess you're saying we're already down to like 20% of your workload, so we've already done a lot for you, right? So.
Well, we, that, we had already reduced to that. This, this isn't changing.
I think what this changes is that the students will be in the classroom more.
All right. Okay. Any remaining?
Well, there's something else you said to include with this, which is just a clarification of last month's motion. Dr. Benson, I'm just, in last month's motion, which talked about both the mask being optional for students and doing away with filling out a form for elementary. Was that also, were you including that in extracurricular activities for the students too? Or was this just during the school day? There seems to be confusion by several of my constituents about that.
I'm sorry, from what I recollect, it was during the school day, it was a mask optional. The extracurricular activities, you know, both for spectators, both for spectators, I know. I don't know participants necessarily.
No.
Mask optional.
Masks are optional for students participating in activities, but there are circumstances when they return from an exposure, et cetera, where the masking is required during that timeframe. And there have been sports, I know specifically, that have been required to wear masks during that, during that time. I don't know if that's the question, but.
For an extracurricular activity that has taken place here in King George, for some reason they were required to wear a mask. I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Yep. So basketball team, student test positive, you're exposed. You come back on day six after your exposure, you're required to wear the mask on day six through 10.
What I would like to, I guess if it needs to be another motion, we can, is that masks are optional. They can be recommended, but they're optional for all students during all activities, extracurricular and during the school day.
So I think the point is that they are, except for when they're identified as a close contact. Is that correct?
Or if they come back, or if we reduce from 10 days to five days for positive, the guidance also says they are to mask on day six through 10. Or if they participate in any of the tests to stay, et cetera, instead of, in lieu of quarantine, the mask is.
So we're requiring at this moment for them to wear a mask on day six when they come back from being tested positive?
Correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Well, then I'd like to make a motion to get things very clear. I'd like to make a motion that masks are optional for students during the school day and for all extracurricular activities, even after they've tested positive for COVID, they're isolated for five days. I'll, I'll condense it in just a moment, but just to explain it, then I'll condense it. On day six, when they return, the masks are still maybe recommended, but they're optional. So my motion would be that masks are optional for all students during the school day, all extracurricular activities, even when they return from a positive case of COVID, that is recommended but not mandatory. So it's optional.
Right. Do we have a second? All right. Do we need further discussion or? I'm good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Chair votes nay, motion carries. So that was masks are optional for all students during the school day and during extracurricular activities when returning from a positive case. Is that clear? Ms. Fisher? Okay. All right. Anything more with the update on COVID protocols? Are we ready for?
We have a separate one about the visitors or do we include?
We're going, let's, that's separate. Let's continue forth. We have a lot of staff members here to talk about the budget, and it's quarter to nine, so let's move on. Okay, so next up, we have our V SBA sample code of conduct for school board members. This is included in our packet. It's available for discussion. And we all need to sign it as a board. Is there, are there any questions? It was also provided as a discussion item at our last meeting. Mr. Bush, any questions? Ms. Hock? We didn't sign it yet. Nobody was here. Nope. Dr. Cutright?
Comment. Thank you.
Mr. Rolls? I also have no comment, so we'll bring that back for action, I believe, at the next meeting, and we will sign it then. Is that correct, Dr. Benson?
Does she have it here? Will you sign it?
We do, we do have it here, so we could sign it, correct?
Yep.
All right, let's all do that before we leave. Excellent. Okay. Next, discussion item, V SBA training sessions. So there has been a lot of interest from the board in standardizing our meeting protocol. I proposed a V SBA training session, since that is standard governance training offered by V SBA specifically for school boards. I reached out to V SBA to solicit dates. My original intent was to do two, or proposal was to do two dates. One for like introductory team training, board training session, and a secondary one to develop bylaws. It seems that we have fewer dates available to all of us as a board. So for starters, we could use the May 18th date, which I believe was available to board members to execute developing our bylaws. So that was my proposal. Are there any other discussion points on the subject? Mr. Bush?
Yeah, is this, I'm a mobile and tail. Where we go there, is it all damn size, just some?
Certainly, yeah, certainly. So, so for example, we did one of these in 20, what is this, 2022, end of 2020? It was held virtually at that period of time. It was during COVID. They are offering them in person at this point in time. And that they are held at their offices in Charlottesville. They're usually, I would say they, they turn it to an all-day event. So our event in 2020 was from nine till, I think, two. So it was about five hours. So by the time you travel there and back, it would be an all-day affair. So, answer your question. Okay. Ms. Hock?
Oh, yes.
Sure. Ms. Hock?
No questions.
Okay. Dr. Cutright?
I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rolls?
So you're talking about a two-day type thing. Can you say again what day one would be versus?
So a one day, a one day session. I had originally envisioned it as a two-day, since we were interested in developing bylaws, which would certainly take, I think, an entire session in addition to a general board training session. So I don't know if you attended any of like the, like they have master board training things that a lot of boards engage in. It's just improving general governance and meeting protocol and how we operate as a board, a lot of the questions that I think we've had. So my initial, my going-in approach was that we could have one day for starters, kind of as like our team building as a new board, and then have a secondary session to do bylaws. But since V SBA is very, they're booked for months. They have a lot of boards interested in just this with them. So in the order, and in an attempt to be efficient, the board, the feedback that I got was not that everyone was available for two of the dates. I think everyone appeared to be available for one of the dates, which was May 18th. So my proposal would be to go and develop our bylaws, since I think we all agree that that is something we would definitely benefit from. So it was a one-day session on May 18th to develop bylaws.
Okay, just for general understanding, so is there a cost, I imagine?
There is, there is.
Okay. So obviously, we're all investing a lot of time in this. It's almost nine o'clock right now. So the meetings and also the committees. So I think it would be good to get all the ideas as far as ways that we could do team building on the table before we start once, since we have, you know, limited time to dedicate to whatever we do.
So what other options are you proposing?
So why I'm particularly that, I can't remember if I emailed it to everyone yet or not, but there's a lot, I did, okay, there's, the one is looking at simply five, so it's. there's a lot of, I did. Okay. There's, the one is looking at simply five. So it's a website where you can go in and we're diverse group of folks, right? So all different personalities, different work styles, work backgrounds. So it's, and we only meet twice a month. So it could take a while to really gel and figure how to work out well together, just doing it just organically. So this, what they hear is they would help you just determine your work styles. It's like a three-minute test. And then you get to read a sheet on yourself and, you know, how you work with folks. And then let's say you get a whole group, say, here's ways where you might click and here's ways where you might kind of butt heads and gives you strategies to deal with that. And so good, a plus of that is it's pretty low cost. It's like for nonprofits, a hundred dollar a head, you know, probably be five of us plus Dr. Benson. And it's very low time investment too. And they also have, if you wanted to go beyond that, they have people who can come and talk to you by to give more in-person training. So I'm sure, I didn't see, and I'll just get there later, but the budget, I didn't see a training line item in the budget. So I wasn't sure that was coming out of, how much we had to work with.
So Mr. Benson, Dr. Benson could probably answer that. But I will say, I looked at your, your simply five. So my, so the V S B A, I know you put the cost estimates in your email. So the V S B A training session is $1,155 for a one-day session, which is cheaper than the options that you laid out in your email. And simply five, I agree, it looks like a very useful team building option for like workplace teams, which I think is what it's geared for. I'm looking at the website. V S B A training sessions are, are for the express purpose of doing governance training, which is what we need as a board. We need governance training. We don't need, I mean, a part of that is team building, but that's different from team building in workplace environments where you're a team developing a product, right? We're governing and there is a distinct difference.
I did have that same question. So I asked them, and they do work with several school boards throughout the country. So we wouldn't be the only ones. But I'd also be interested in knowing the different training sessions that are available for V S B. So you're recommending doing the bylaws, one which we already have draft bylaws, which I haven't gotten to go through in detail yet. So I don't know, I mean, how much work do you think is needed there?
So we have draft bylaws, but the draft bylaws were not developed as a board. They were developed by a subcommittee that was appointed by the chairperson at that point in time. So the entire board has not had input into them. And V S B A is well-versed in facilitating school board developments of, of bylaws, which is what they, you know, is what they do.
Okay. I would be interested in knowing what the full range of training sessions are available from V S B A.
Okay. Well, you're welcome to also search. You know, they have been extensive. I did ask what options they had for, for bylaw development and team building in addition to having, like doing just this, the having a training session with them. And other than attending their webinars and workshops and all of their conferences, which are, you know, certainly recommended on there, a lot of really good resources as well. I mean, the in-person training sessions with them is their, is their standard thing and they can tailor it to what you're interested in. So if you want to develop bylaws, they'll help you develop bylaws. If you just need, you know, assistance working together as a board, which is, I think that's how we approached it in 2020. That's what we did. It was kind of, you know, a team building session to develop what, what all of our priorities were, what we wanted to get out of a board, you know, as working together as a board, what our priorities were. So. Mr. Bush?
Just, can we appreciate what Mr. Roll said, maybe after, assuming we're going to do this training on May 18th, which sounds fine to me, afterwards, maybe see what that encompasses and then maybe consider what Mr. Rolls is saying after this training. And it may be valuable. I know what he's talking about. I've done it probably 50 times in my life in different boards and things. But let's look at it again after we do this training to see if that might be valuable to include doing something along those lines.
So what are you looking for tonight? Are we just introducing this or you're wanting to have a motion?
Well, since there's additional discussion in the past, it's been a, you know, in previous boards, V S B A training sessions were, you know, there wasn't a lot of debate over them. So I would say at this point in time, I would make a motion to, to commit as a board to the May 18th training date to develop bylaws. And then of course, we're welcome to do other things after that point in time. So I'll make a motion to commit as a board to the May 18th training session with V S B A to develop bylaws.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Can I, a quick question? I don't have my full calendar here. That is one of the-
That was the date, that was the date you were available. Yes.
So by way of discussion, I'd be willing to commit to that date to go there, but I would like some more time to review what they offer and decide whether bylaws is the best use of the time. Cause I haven't, I'd like to go through the bylaws, the draft bylaws we have to-
Okay. So-
First.
Certainly. Keep in mind, they're not bylaws, as I mentioned, that had been developed by the board. So they were, okay.
Last ones.
Okay. Any further debate?
So is the, the motion so amended?
No, it wasn't amended. It was just, it's been seconded.
Okay. So I guess I would like to amend it that we're committing to the May 18th date for V S B A, but the exact topic that we'll be working on is TBD.
So it's a very ambiguous motion. Amendment.
Yeah.
I don't think we make motions on things that are TBD.
I think Mr. Rolls is just saying, you know, an understanding that we'll vote on the motion. He understands that. But I'm thinking he's saying that we, and I think I'd like to know too, before we go, let's make sure as a board, we understand what it is, we're going to, the topics we're going to be covering.
Certainly.
Okay. I think I agree.
Yeah. So we can amend it to agree that May 18th is the day today. And then next meeting, we can, if we need to do that motion to determine the focus of it, we can do that then.
So what is your, your proposed amendment to the motion?
So I propose that we amend the motion, substitute to say that we will make plans to do a V S B A training session, May 18th.
Okay.
With topic on specified at this point.
Okay. All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Chair votes aye. So that, so the motion is to commit to a May 18th training session. So I guess we already voted on the amendment. So all in favor of committing to a May 18th training session with V S B A, say aye.
I thought we already did that aye.
It was in, it was, it's been amended to motion. It was, now we're back to the-
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Great. So moving on to our preliminary draft of the 2022, 2023 budget. Dr. Benson?
Madam Chair, could we take a break?
Oh, certainly. I'm sorry. Yes.
Do the budget.
Yes, certainly. We will take a break until nine oh three, five minutes. How's that? Good?
Just barely.
All right, we're now going to pick back up. We good, Mr. Vance? Okay, so we will begin with the preliminary draft of our 2223 budget. Dr. Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So as I've mentioned before, we are engaged in budget season. So I want to efficiently present this first draft. Each year, this first draft is issued with a huge asterisk that there are more moving parts that are yet to be understood. And so what I'm going to present tonight is basically talk a little bit about the process, give you some context as far as how we collaboratively develop this budget. I'm required by statute to present a budget of need for the upcoming fiscal year. I rely heavily on those who are impacted by the budget as far as input and defining proposed expenditures for next year. Before I begin with the next slide, and I'm going to review quickly some of the survey results that I promised before, one of our policies does address the want to engage and to be collaborative in this process. And part of that is inviting our professional organizations to come speak with you or to present any information they have for your consideration at the beginning of this process, that their input can be considered and utilized as we develop this over the next several weeks in preparation for the Board of Supervisors. So I'm pleased that from our Virginia Professional Educators Association, both Ms. Richards and Ms. Schill are here. And at this time, I'd invite them to come and offer any commentary you'd like for the board to consider as we enter the budget process. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. Thank you, Mr. Vance, for putting up our slides. This year, King George County Schools, Virginia Professional Educators have just a few budget requests. We have compiled survey or salary scales from all of the surrounding districts. We did not include Charles County, which is significantly higher than all of the surrounding counties in the state of Virginia, by almost $6,000 higher than our starting salary, which is right across the bridge. But we have included this for your reference. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. We would like to propose that there be at least a 5.9% cost of living increase for all staff. Additionally, a step increase for all staff and for the school board to cover 100% of any increase in healthcare costs. Also, to please consider a bonus for all staff at the end of this school year with any surplus funds, like several of the other surrounding counties have done. We'd also like the board to keep in mind that while a cost of living increase was proposed for this school year, and while we did receive that cost of living increase with the increased cost of insurance and the increased taxes, most teachers actually saw a decrease in our salary this school year. So if that could please be kept in mind whenever we're determining any additional increases to insurance, if that could be taken into account for the staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you very much.
So I'll transition back. Appreciate that input. And I do believe as I present, you know, some of the points made by VPE will resonate with you. So you know, and we talked earlier at an earlier meeting about this being an initial step. I do survey the entire staff, offer an opportunity for all staff to participate in a survey regarding the budget. And I'm going to get into the actual questions and results here in a second. We use this not only as a means of input, but also as a means for communication across departments and schools. You know, the those who are entering proposed expenditures for next year, maybe the principals or department heads have access to the commentary, not just the Likert scale responses, but also the commentary, so that they can look at that commentary and see how we can improve meeting needs for the upcoming fiscal year that perhaps were not fully addressed in the current. So with that said, I want to, let's go to the next slide, John. This just gives you a breakdown of the participation so that you see it was distributed to all staff. We had 234 of our staff members respond to the survey. You can see the numbers as far as their role in our school division by way of that pie chart. Next one, John. So this is the location to make sure that we have all localities, all schools, and our transportation facility, our centralized facility represented in the, in this survey. Next one. Thank you. Okay, so this was the first question. I put the question itself in that box to the left. But you can see, we basically asked them if they have the equipment they need to fulfill their job responsibilities. And then we qualify that question by describing what, what equipment is generally considered. So with that, you can see, and I did some quick. In this first one, 87.6% of those that responded indicated that they strongly agreed or agree that they had the equipment necessary to fulfill their, their job. Now, if they, if they check disagree or strongly disagree, then we certainly asked them and invited them to leave a comment as to why that was. What was missing so that we can consider that for next time to try to continuously improve our ability to, to meet the needs of the school division? Next one. And these are just examples. There's no necessarily theme structuring or anything. These were just examples of some of the, the comments that we received from those that participated as far as equipment. Okay, next one. Supplies, supplies are those that are consumable, a little different than equipment, equipment we may use from year to year. But with regard to supply, you'll see there that 95.1% of respondents indicated they either agreed or strongly agreed they had the supplies needed. Next slide, give you some examples of just some of the supply commentary we got that we may need to look at addressing in a little more holistic fashion this upcoming year. Next one, John. Programs and services, another area we asked the same very same question. And in this case, again, we had 95.9, very strong response rate for agree or strongly agree that the programs and services needed were there for them as a result of our budget. Okay, and next slide, again, just some examples of some of the comments that we received that might help us improve for this next fiscal year. So again, you can flip the next slide, John, but I wanted to make sure that you, that our community understands, not just this board, that this is not me sitting in a room typing in numbers. This is a collaborative process. And there are other elements of this process that I'm going to show you and post publicly for our community so that we are in fact building a budget of need for this board to consider and ultimately for our Board of Supervisors to consider in terms of supporting it partly with local funding. So I want to first talk about revenue. In the notebook I've given you and in the board packet publicly, there's a document that's simply titled revenues. And in the school system's situation, we have several different sources of revenue. We simply don't receive one lump sum from one source. Our revenue is scattered across state lines, federal sources, and of course, localities. We also have grants. We have a separate fund for food service, separate fund for debt service that we work collaboratively with the county for. But we are primarily for this process concerned with the operating budget, which is Fund 250. We'll talk about that in here in a second. I won't go through every source of revenue and reading that document to you, but that document there is a, is a good resource and provides a good descriptor for the different types of revenues that we use to build this budget. So just a quick glance from fiscal year to fiscal year, you'll see there that state revenue for this current year, a little more than 30 million. We expect almost a $4 million increase in state revenue for next year. Keep in mind many of the things that we've been reading about. The state, Governor Northam, prior to his 10-year expiring, proposed a 10% raise across to the two years of the biennium for teachers. So that is a large portion of that increased state revenue. Keep in mind, however, that the way Virginia funds schools, it's a partnership between the state and the locality. So while the state general assembly or governor and ultimately general assembly may recommend that type of, of raise for employees, it is ultimately up to the locality to match their percentage needed to make that initiative whole. Okay, we'll come back to that here in a second. But that's a huge jump in state revenue, but it is certainly attributable in, in large part to the employee compensation increase proposal. Other state revenues, again, I don't want to go through all the descriptors here, but that's going to, that means the same federal grant money stay relatively the same from fiscal year to fiscal year. We get down to the local revenue. And you can see this patch here, what was appropriated by the local Board of Supervisors was 18 million flat. To make the budget as presented tonight whole, that amount would need to increase $4.3 million. And I'm going to talk a little more specifically about that number as we progress through the budget. Okay, John, you can go to the next one, please. Okay, I've mentioned compensation at the state level. Just from a 10,000-foot view, I'm trying to attribute here the major cost differences between fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. Compensation is obviously the lion's share. We are about to, to enact the FY '22 step increase that the board approved back prior to the holidays beginning in March. And the cost for that is approximately $850,000. That is a recurring cost, of course. Once we compensate employees at the next step, we have to roll that new cost into the next fiscal year. So again, that, that cost will be a recurring cost that will carry forward into FY '23. Our strategic plan that the board endorsed this evening, clearly a part of that is to maintain a competitive compensation rate for our employees so that we can attract and maintain the staff we have. It is very difficult, as we all know, to, to attract teachers. When we have vacancies, they're very difficult to fill for employees across the board. So we want to maintain a competitive compensation for employees. As was mentioned by VPE, and as I mentioned to this board, this first draft is inclusive of that social security COLA. We have, every year, we've tied a cost of living increase to the social security COLA, the rationale there being that we want to keep our employees' spending power the same relative to inflation. And then, of course, we want to award them their step increase for remaining with us for another school year. So this budget is inclusive of a 5.9% cost of living allowance and a step increase, which varies from 0.6, depending on the step. Early in the, the scale, we have a little compression, so it may only be an additional 0.6, or it could be a 2.0 if later in the scale. I do have some relative good news. You see $161,000 there as far as health insurance. That is a total increase. We just received word a couple of days ago that our health insurance rate will only increase 4%. Initially, I had to put a 10% proxy in there, so we were able to reduce that by 6. So 4% in this draft of the budget, that entire increase has been levied against the school board, not split between the school board and the employees, for the very reason that Ms. Richard explained. We don't want an increased health insurance premium negating a compensation increase that employees receive right out of the gate. Equipment, services, and consumables, you can see in the budget document, a good piece of this is due to inflation. We have inflated costs for all three of these areas, in particular utilities, the cost of fuel to run our buses, that cost is increasing and projected to increase into the next fiscal year. Lastly, we, we do have additional staffing that is needed for next year. I've invited and asked, and I appreciate them being here greatly. I know it's late on a Valentine's night, and they're not going to be happy with me. But I do appreciate very much staff being here to try to help explain briefly some of the additional, or all the additional staffing that we are proposing as part of next fiscal year's budget. Excellent, John. So with that as an introduction, I do want to call up, and I thought this would be a good opportunity for the board to get just a very brief, it doesn't need to go into, we'll have time to get into questions in the future if needed. But I wanted each of these positions to be addressed briefly for the board so you had an understanding of why these positions are needed for next fiscal year. So I, I'll start with Dr. Boyd. I know you, you've done some homework as far as the school requests, school level requests, if you'd be kind enough to address those. And the, I'm sorry, the department's transportation.
Go ahead and do all those.
Yes, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. As you can see here, these are the needed positions. What I was going to do tonight is cover the school positions, also the facilities and transportation. So I'll run through those quickly and then have, I believe, Ambush come up to speak next. So again, this is a need-based budget, and part of this process, as Dr. Benson, Dr. Benson mentioned, is to go out and implore that information. So I went and spoke to all the principals that were requesting additional staff positions, and I'll just start at the top. King George High School is in need of four teachers. Right now, there are, and we use the metrics of the number of classes that had 27-plus students in the class. So with the size of our classrooms, as many of you have been in the high school, and the number of desks in a classroom, 27 is a high number for a high school, high school classroom. Currently, 63% of the classes, the history classes, have 27-plus students. Our English classes right now have 29% that have 27-plus in the class. And that number is, is slightly lower because this year, we did have six of our English teachers at the high school teach four classes. They taught the entire instructional day, all four instructional blocks, which helped alleviate that a little bit. 74% currently of our PE classes have 27-plus. And then finally, we were, the high school is requesting, and our teacher as well, our, our classes are maxed out, and we still have a number of students that are pursuing art as an option. And then just overall, the population of the high school in the last four years has increased by about 140 students. So with that increase in students, obviously, the instructional staff, in order to keep the numbers relatively low, are needed. Next up, the King George Middle School is requesting an increase in their AD, Athletic Director stipend. On the middle school level, the Athletic Director is, is also a teacher, unlike on the high school level, but the demands and the responsibilities are very similar to that of a high school athletic director. So the middle school is looking for an increase in the athletic stipend because of the added hours and responsibilities of the Athletic Director. Elementary schools are requesting three reading teachers, I think, and you're covering some of those, is that correct? No? All right, well, for, I can go ahead and cover some of those as well for the, actually, I might need your help with the, with the reading teachers. You can help, go ahead.
Yeah, I can. The, the reading teachers, actually, last year, we brought this forward. These are additional teachers that will work with our ELGs. They're specialists, they're coaches really, is what the, what the aim was to augment our approach to making sure students, particularly our younger students, are on grade level reading-wise by third grade. So this was, I think, for the past two years, a proposal to solidify that ELG approach. Neither year did it make it because of the austere local funding primarily. So we've, we've, we've pulled that back. It's still a need, it's still a, a strategy to improve our reading at the elementary level.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. And then Sealston Elementary School on the third grade level right now, with staff projections for, for next year, their class sizes on the third grade level would be 25.8 students, which is above the SOQ, 24 point, 24 to one is the recommended. So an additional third grade teacher at Sealston would drop that class size down to 21.5 under the SOQ. I'll drop down now to facilities. I spoke with Gary. He is recommending two additional maintenance technicians. Right now, we do have some increased square footage with the added middle school, and then also just the different ages of the buildings and the different demands. They're diverse across the school division. Right now, our maintenance supervisor is spending a lot of time out on the road and not doing a lot of the supervisory tasks that he would like to do and being able to manage quality across the division for maintenance. So the requested maintenance technicians would help him in that task. And then finally, in speaking with Valerie with transportation, they are requesting two additional drivers, the dispatch contract extension, and one additional mechanic. As we all know, it's not exclusive to King George County. School bus driving right now is a hard job to do across, you know, the, the country. And the job really boils down to the need for more people. So with the additional bus drivers, it would alleviate a lot of the stress we have in the department right now. On an average day, everyone in the school board office, the supervisor, the dispatcher, the router, the mechanics, they're all driving buses just to get out. So in order to be able to man the phone calls and to operate the transportation department effectively, those are the positions that they would need in the, in the upcoming budget. Okay?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ann Bush. I'm here to represent the Special Services, Student Services Department. So we'll start with the first one there, teacher on administrative assignment. We currently have one who is spread across all three elementary schools, and right now, she's working with our referrals for evaluation for students who may be suspected of having a disability. And she's also handling school-based intervention teams for each of the elementary schools. And right now, she has about 80 students in queue for school-based intervention teams across the three. And she has 98 students who have been referred for evaluations for special education. So right now, across the three, she's handling about 178 cases. This is as of Friday. As we started the year out, the beginning of the school year, we were looking to really have her support the teachers in their tier one and tier two interventions for our students who are having some difficulty, especially coming back from missing face-to-face learning here the last year or so. And so we have a real need there. And so we've been looking to repurpose one of the other positions that we have in our department to provide at least two of these positions, but we're asking for this position, the additional teacher and administrative assignment, to give each elementary school one of these positions so that they can really hone in on working with beefing up tier one instruction and also tier two intervention for those students who are having difficulties. It's been very successful. Our principals have given us really good feedback with the program and what we've done so far. So that's really what that one position is for. The second position that you see is the diagnostician. Currently in our budget, we have some additional, we have funding for a third psychologist for 10 months. It's on the contracted services side of the budget. And right now, what we're really asking to do is to transpose that over from the contracted services side of the budget to the, to the staff side of the budget. Again, this would be a 10-month position, and rather than having the psychologist, who would be doing the assessments, doing psychological and educational assessments for our students who we may suspect have a disability, they would be doing the educational assessments for us, which will help our two current psychologists right now. Because we are graded as a school division, our indicator 11 every year from VDOE says that we have 65 days to be able to go through and assess our students and come back to eligibility. And so we've not quite hit that 100% mark. And so this will help us get there because, as you can imagine, we were tracking really well this year, and we had caught up through every, everything, through the closures of COVID. However, that one week where we were off due to our weather closures, we have, it's now put us a little bit behind. And so that's what that diagnostician position would help us be able to fulfill. Next, you'll see paraprofessionals. So we have a couple of different categories here. The first is growth. We're requesting for, traditionally, every year, we add three or four paraprofessionals across our division for special education. This is due to the, that wild card kind of effect of we don't know who's going to be transferring in. And so as our numbers or our needs increase, we then naturally have been adding over the last three years, three to four paraprofessionals on top of those. on top of those that we are budgeting for as we look for students as they're transitioning from preschool to elementary, elementary to middle, and middle to high. We, of course, always look to repurpose our staff, our paraprofessional staff. If we have students who are leaving, then we also take a look at that in December and a lot for that as well. So the growth there, we've explained what the four is for. The 1DD is for a student moving up from early childhood into our elementary. And then the autism, two of those positions are going to be for a an autism or low-incidence classroom that we are looking to install at Sealston Elementary School. Traditionally, at the elementary level, we have always had our students with significant disabilities at the elementary level, all housed in one building at King George Elementary School. And so as space has allowed, with our sixth graders going to the middle school, we are now able to push some of the students back out to their neighborhood schools, which we should be doing for our children with disabilities. And so Sealston actually, this year, has kept about seven of those children who were coming up from early, who came up from early childhood last year. And then we have another group that's also ready to come up and through, and Sealston, if we have a teacher and two pairs, then we will be able to staff those students in their base schools. We do have some other little pieces, like an installation of a bathroom, those sort of things that we would be able to move forward in our hopes of including those students again in their base school. And then the last ECSE, paraprofessional position. We already have a part-time position at the early childhood, and based on the need of students that we know are going to be coming in next year, we will require that other half filled because of specific needs. All right, and then lastly, we have, we have a request for some awards or stipends for some of our leads. So we have traditionally special education leads, like department chairs at the middle, high school, and three elementary levels. And we're asking for an increase in theirs just because of the amount of work that they do above and beyond. They are constantly reviewing IEPs and their documentation, ensuring everything is appropriate and drafts are ready to go prior to meetings. They are reviewing all the progress reports that come out every four and a half weeks for their schools. So they have a lot more responsibilities as far as paperwork and documentation. And then the lead speech pathologist stipend that we are looking at is, we have currently six speech pathologists and a few contractors who help us across all of our schools to be able to provide services. We would ask this person be able to support those monthly lead meetings, bring in more professional development for them. And so combined altogether, for all of those, what do we have, six or seven positions, it would be a bump in the stipend of $7,200 total for those. So that's all that I have, and next up, I believe, is Christine Hill.
Good evening. The Division of Instruction CTE Coordinator, this position that we are requesting in the Instruction Department would be a coordinator who is responsible for the maintenance, promotion, and growth of the current CTE and work-based learning programs. The recruitment of a, recruiting qualified students is a responsibility of the coordinator. Students have to receive a work-based learning experience before they graduate if they are not taking an AP or dual enrollment course. So we need to provide those experiences, which aligns into our Career and Technical Education Program. So additionally, this position would be involved with tracking and reporting all of the information needed for Career and Technical Education activities in accordance with the regulations under the VDOE. And examples of some of the things that they would do, they would go out to the high school and work with students as far as finding out which students needed those work-based learning experiences and pairing them with community members. This person would need to be able to work with community members, effectively represent the school division, actually go out into the community to bridge those relationships with our community members and work-based learning. In addition, the Department of Instruction is asking for a small amount of funding to, I guess, fill out the rest of the grant-funded position for social and emotional learning. And so as a part of this position, this person would build foundational support by working with all five schools, the administrators and the counseling departments, to develop a plan, a support plan, to strengthen the adult social and emotional learning competencies across the division, and then promote those SEL or Social Emotional Learning goals with students. So we already have some things in place in our schools. So what that division coordinator would do, or that division specialist would do, is work to develop a plan that would create a bridge from our elementaries to our middles to our high, or to our middle to our high with social emotional learning. And then put into place professional development for teachers and staff and administrators, as well as central office staff. And then continually improve by creating a plan for continuous improvement in social and emotional learning. The other area that the Division of Instruction is asking for funding is for our ITL Lead Teacher and our ESOL Lead Teacher. So for ITL, that's Instructional Technology Liaison. We have five ITLs in the division. The lead would be responsible for pulling the team together to discuss not only instructional technology, but also technological needs that they're responsible for, for fixing and creating the one-to-one programs in the schools. So what we have found is by replicating models from one school to the other, we are much more efficient. But it is easier to manage this if there is one lead teacher. And so this lead teacher would not only be responsible for working on plans for one-to-one in the schools, but also they would be responsible for things like STEAM night or other professional development programs for, for teachers within buildings. So that was a stipend that I was looking for, or an award. I'm also looking for an award or stipend for our lead ESOL teacher, who is currently not being paid this. However, she is responsible for coordinating the entire division ESOL program in regards to testing, under WIDA testing, also 30-day letters that are part of our requirements under Title III, and some other requirements that are across, that are division-wide. We have two full-time ESOL teachers for all five schools. And so while we are within our allowable numbers of students for those, to employ those two teachers, it's challenging to manage the program as, at the division level. And this lead ESOL teacher, who is responsible for the WIDA testing and the other components, would, would receive this stipend or award for their additional duties and their additional work. I also have up there a teacher from, that we were going to pay a portion from the Northern Technical Center. And really, that's a placeholder right now. We are trying to start a program. It's called Game Design and Simulation. It's a Career and Technical Education Course. We are looking at trying something new and partnering with the Technical Center by creating an asynchronous course. And so we would pay a piece of that teacher, like one-fifth of that teacher's salary. But we're waiting, our timelines aren't meshing, our timeline with the division where the Northern Technical Center is and our division, and so they have a board meeting later at the end of the month to approve or not approve this. And it was approved under the old superintendent, the new superintendent, and the new board have to now approve it. So there have been some changes in leadership. So if we're able to go forward, then I would be requesting this new position so that we could offer this new course for our high school students. Any questions?
Yes, just wondering how long we've been without a CTE coordinator?
Excuse me?
Did you add a CTE coordinator? So how long have we been without one?
Forever. It would be a new position. I mean, it's under my responsibilities right now. So it's something that I am in charge of under my position. But we don't have anybody specifically for work-based learning. That is a requirement that is relatively new under the SOQs at the state level.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. But the request is not new. We've tried for several years to, to augment CTE offerings. And so that, that position has been proposed, I think, for two years now. We've not been able to fund it. So it, like the ELG teachers, I get that right, Ms. Hill, you might be able to help me too on that. But the three, I don't mean to call you back up. Hopefully, the reading teachers I addressed.
Yes, just the three reading teachers, there is increased disparity in, in our reading scores. We have data to show the trends of students coming to school, either coming to school unprepared and not able to, and, and scoring low in our assessments. And then, of course, with COVID, we are still trying to address the unfinished learning. So the three reading specialists would be in addition to what we already have in place in schools. So each elementary school does have a reading specialist and paraprofessionals that are devoted to reading instruction. But this would create a larger workforce for that specific need. So.
Thank you.
Hello again. So my actual job is the Supervisor of Student and Family Services, which oversees counselors and social workers, nurses, and all of their comprehensive programs that fall under those categories. I'm not asking for any new positions, just asking for extended contracts for four of our positions. Three of them are actually requested by Jennifer Collins at the middle school, and those are her three counselors. Currently, they are 10-month positions for the regular, I say for the counselors, and then 11-month position for the Director of Counseling. Really, in most divisions across the state, those are 11 months regular contract and then a 12-month contract for the Director. And that's what we are requesting in this budget, and I believe we've requested in years past. In addition, similarly, we do have a Lead Nurse, who is one of our school-based nurses. We are very fortunate that we have a nurse at every building, and she has taken on the role of Lead Nurse for essentially the same as a department chair stipend. However, her, her responsibilities are much greater than that, and really need to increase for that summer time, which essentially would be about two weeks before and two weeks after school ends and starts in order to do the state reporting and the professional development, the annual training that's required, all of the inventorying of equipment and ordering of medications that we have to keep onsite and those sorts of things. So I'm requesting an additional month on her contract as well.
Good evening. Currently, we have three building technicians for five schools, as well as our preschool, transportation, and school board office facilities. The general responsibilities of a technician includes supporting the multiple forms of testing, testing, repair, and user support for Chromebooks and laptops, software and hardware installation. We also service things such as desktops, projectors, document cameras, webcams, access points, servers, printers, and the list goes on. Building technicians provide real-time troubleshooting as issues arise on a daily basis. Currently, with three building technicians, at any given time, we can only be servicing three sites. As you know, this year, we became one-to-one at the secondary level. That alone requires another level of support and attention. These are our two largest sites with approximately 2,200 students combined between the two, who have an assigned school device that goes back and forth to school with them. Having three positions in this field to manage the multiple sites, number of employees, and number of students is very difficult to sustain. We want to grow our division by bringing in more innovative technology, instructional technology, that moves us forward and that will equip our teachers appropriately and give them what they need to connect, engage, and inspire their students. I'm proposing a lead technician to serve as an additional building/site technician to not only support our multiple facilities, equipment, staff, and students, but also to provide leadership and continuity in our current structure.
Okay, so I want to thank again the staff for coming out tonight. It gives you an opportunity as a, you know, with the majority of new board members to get to know these folks who work very hard coordinating these programs and these aspects of our school division. I appreciate them doing the homework and defining the need relative to the positions that are needed for next year. John, if you would mind moving to the next slide. So this is a comparison between FY22 and the proposed FY23 by appropriation unit. And so you'll hear that term because our budget, as is every operating budget in Virginia, is organized by appropriation unit. This is so the state can track expenditures. Later, you're going to see a document that has fund codes that are 16 to 20 digits long. All those are used across Virginia to track expenditures across all of the, across all school divisions, so that expenditure can be aggregated at the state level at year's end. So you see there along the left, the current year funding at the bottom. You'll see that our Fund 250, our operating budget total cost is $48.7 million this year. Of that $48.7 million, we relied on $18 million of local funding. And that came out to about 36, well, it came out to 36.9% of our operating budget is supported locally. Conversely, then you see FY23. You'll see the same figures as far as the, or the same appropriation units. You'll see the increased figures that, that are impacted by what I mentioned previously, generally, and I'm going to show you here in a second the documents where you can dig deeper to find the differences. But that Fund 250 total cost as proposed would be $57.0 million, which would require $22.6 billion in local funding. Or if you want to look at it relative to this current year, it would necessitate locally 39.7% of our operating budget being supported locally. So I want to, I want to pause there for a second because, as you know, in Virginia, as a state, we adopt a two-year budget, a biennial budget. So we are at the beginning of the next biennial budget. When that happens, the state recalculates for every locality in Virginia, a statistic called a Local Composite Index. It's a four-digit figure after a decimal. For next year, our new Local Composite Index goes up. It goes up from .37 something or other to 3.8, or to .3815. Conceptually, what this means is that for this year with a .37, it's saying that, okay, King George, your, your localized property tax digest, property wealth, your localized sales tax, and your localized federal adjusted gross income, median income. your localized sales tax, and your localized federal adjusted gross income, median income, is such that that locally should be able to support for every dollar 37 point something cents. So the conceptually, that's what this is, what the LCI tries to do statewide, is to kind of equalize funding based on the the robust nature or the lack thereof of a locality. So because our our local composite index goes up to .38, now the state is saying, okay, King George, that's good news. You have, your property values undoubtedly have increased. Your tax base is such where it's more, therefore, you can shoulder more of the burden for the the funding of education in your locality. So now our LCI is .38, essentially saying that we should be able to afford in King George 38 cents on a dollar or 38% of the budget. So I use that figure because it's kind of a check for, okay, we're at 39.7 right now. You know, we were behind last year because, of course, those are austere times. And if you were part of that process, you remember the board supervisors really funded us for this current year below the funding level for the previous year. And that previous year, they funded us at a flat rate from the previous, the year prior to that. So I don't say that to be critical. I say that to say that there is a little bit of a catch-up involved in that extra 1%, 1.7% from two prior fiscal years because of the initial price tag, of course. You know, I don't think we've gone into a budget where we got needed for a million in local, additional local funding to make it whole. So I offer that as a, as a relative comparison that I think needs to be considered, not just the 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 flat dollar amount. Okay, so with that said, I want to give you a quick rundown of what's in your book and for our community, how they can track every dollar and account for every dollar that we're proposing to spend next year. If you'd be kind enough just to take, to let, to bear with me, I'd like to take you to the third tab in your notebook, which contains a document that looks like this. So the budget book, we call it. This is the operating fund, Fund 250. It contains all appropriation units in this document. So what I'd ask you to do is turn to page 41 of that document, if you don't mind. And you're going to see there, I'm going to pick on Ms. Half here in a second. She's a rookie in the budget, right? I'm just teasing. I'm not, I'm not going to pick on you. She's doing an outstanding job. So that, this is the technology appropriation category. Okay, and you see along, you'll see the first several, about three-quarters of that first of those first line items are personnel-related, right? We have salaries, we have FICA, we have Virginia Retirement System contributions, health insurance, group life insurance, disability retiree health credit. And then we come across something called purchase services. You see that? If you run out to the right, you'll see 494,595. Okay, so that's just an aggregate number of all of the proposed expenditures that are related to purchase services for technology next year. For you all, if you will then go to the next tab, the Budget Builder, you'll see that the first several pages are an executive summary of this document. But I want you to go back to the very first page that, I'm colorblind, but it has small print. It has technology. So flip forward to this page. Looks just like that's it. Keep going there, Mr. Rolls, in the doc, in this document itself. You flip and pass. There you go. Okay, and you see on the long left side, inside, you see technology all the way down the left column, right? So now, this is the, what we call Budget Builder. These are, this is the stuff, non-personnel costs. Okay, so we're looking at purchase services, which is not non-personnel costs. You'll see a heading, or you see to the, in the middle column, after professional development at the top, you'll see purchased services. Okay, and it's a, it's a, it's a white column. There's no shading at all. If you follow that all the way up to the right, you'll see that same figure, $494,594. That's the, that's the total. And that is the same amount that we put in the budget book, okay? But this gives you the detail for what's behind that number in the budget book. Okay, so you'll look underneath there, and you'll see that Ms. Half and her staff have defined for everyone to see in great detail all of the proposed expenditures, one after the other, with the core funding cost out to the right. That includes, yeah, that, right, that's right. Okay, so that, I just want to see, show you where you can then, as you look through this budget, because it's, it's a big budget. But, you know, when I first began, we needed greater detail than just the budget book. You know, we want to be very transparent about every dollar that's proposed to be spent. That way, our community can see what we, what we need as a school division, where we plan to spend those dollars for each of those appropriation units. So it's, it's served us well in the past, I think, as a communication tool for our community to understand. It's helped with the board supervisors because they then then understand that we're not just rolling forward an amount from last year and adding 5%. You know, we don't budget that way. We truly zero-base with regard to our stuff year to year. And I know that it's a lot of work for staff to do, but I do believe in it. I do believe that it helps us to be good stewards, to be transparent when it comes to our taxpayers' money, particularly that, or all money. But particularly since local money is very hard to come by because we have many local needs, you know, to include schools, fire, rescue, all those types of things. So at any rate, with that, appreciate everybody's involvement in it. I appreciate everybody behind the scenes who helped compile this. I appreciate our staff as far as the input, and I'll, in advance, appreciate the input of our community. Through you all as a school board. But this is here for, for everyone to consider the time being. Our next big date, so to speak, will be a, me, a chance to meet with the board supervisors to communicate this very same budget with any, any things you all catch or any considerations you want to include prior that date. That's typically first or second week of March. We'll go to them. I will say this, just in closing, that here's where we are in Virginia. We have the revenue, the state revenue is based on Governor Northam's proposed budget released in December. We are, this week, we have crossover day, I think, is Wednesday at the General Assembly. So each house has created a budget bill, and they're not identical. So each house has their own priorities, their own dollars with those priorities in a budget bill. Those bills will cross over to their, their neighbor house. So the Senate will go to the House, and the House will go to the Senate, whereby each will traditionally reject the bill of the other. They will assemble then a committee to come together, and that committee will compromise, will come to a compromise to present one bill for both houses to consider, approve, and then send to the governor. So the next time we meet, I may have updated revenue figures for you, one for the House and one for the Senate. And you can see if there's any change based on priorities from Governor Northam's budget to now the General Assembly in the Senate. And then further down the road, usually after the Board of Supervisors meeting, we then learn any changes the governor wants to make to the bill that's forwarded to him. And then ultimately, that is approved as the new biennial state budget. So we have a little ways to go statewide as far as revenue. We'll see what with a, you know, changes in administration. We'll see how impactful that is to our revenue figure, our state revenue figure, and I'll keep you updated because, of course, that would, that would change our bottom line. Okay, so I'll stop there. I've done a lot of talking. I've, again, I appreciate my staff working so hard and taking time out to come and communicate those staffing needs. Happy to answer any initial questions you have, and certainly we're available to help you all as far as any questions you may have between now and even the next time we meet. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Benson, and to all of the staff who are with us here this evening. But any questions?
Well, it's too late really now, but can we email you with a couple of questions? That'd be fine. Okay, I'll do, we'll just do that. I have a couple. I'll just email.
Okay. Ms. Hawk?
Not a question, but but a generalized concern. Having been through this process, both as an employee using the Budget Builder and as a board member reviewing the numbers. And I, one, and every year I say this, but but it continues to be a generalized concern that all of our staff work so hard to conserve money. People don't realize how thrifty, to put it mildly, that our staff has to be from, from the, from the top to the bottom, and the bottom to the top, and all across the middle. And one example of this is that in their budget requests, they're putting in stipend requests instead of increasing salaries. And that does make a difference because stipend requests do not carry over with retirement benefits. A stipend request increases the money that a person gets for whatever position they're doing. And that's certainly appropriate and needed. But what we really need is for the community and the county and the state to be aware that we've got to increase salaries as well because that increases the long-term benefits and draws people into staying with their divisions on a permanent basis. That's my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright?
I'll email Dr. Benson. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rolls?
I'll see you email.
Okay, thank you. I don't know that I have any specific questions. I know a lot of work went into this. I do like this year. It seems color-coded and it'll, looks a little refreshed, and I like it. So, and I know there's obviously a big, a big delta this year between previous local funding and this year. I, I, I've had to say I'm encouraged by it, but I know that that means that we're really taking a hard look at what we really do need. And so I think that speaks volumes. So thank you all for putting that together. Okay, well, without further ado, thank you all again. And our next discussion item that we added this evening was staff masking. So I believe Mr. Bush made the motion to add it to the agenda, so I'll open, no, Mr. Rolls.
Head visiting, yes, staff.
Yep, okay. So Mr. Rolls, would you like to join the discussion?
I'll just say, I think this is more just going to be informational here because it's my research, look and saw that DULI has got the regulation. which, what I read a while ago, I thought that it said that masks are only required for the unvaccinated employees. But which, but they say that if you're fully vaccinated, if it's an area of high transmission, then masks are still required. So that that being a regulation, and I think pretty much everywhere is considered higher transmission right now. So I don't know if there's much, really anywhere for us to go with that. So it's, acknowledge the staff, it doesn't really make a lot of logical sense that we say masks aren't necessary for students, but they are for staff. But there's just this legal situation here, so. I don't think we're going to change that until DULI or legislature moves on it.
Okay.
Just something brief about that, but everything I'm reading is is showing that Governor Youngkin is really trying to push for some of those changes to take place in the legislature and so on. So I think in future months, we'd be able to discuss this in a realistic way, the direction things are going.
Yep, certainly. All right. Any further comments on the subject? Okay, all right. Next up, masking for visitors.
It should be real quick. Since we have made masks optional for students, it just, you know, obviously, a lot of parents are making decisions with their children. It's like, and then we're requiring the mask for the parents everywhere they go. So I would think for the same reasons of making masks optional for students, I think we should make masks optional for visitors. So I would like to make them, well, that's, I'll make a motion to make it quick. I'd like to make a motion that masks be optional for all visitors entering the school during the school day and then also for all extracurricular activities.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further debate? So Mr. Bush, he's said your piece.
Yeah, it's, I could repeat all the things I mentioned at the last board meeting regarding masks being optional for the students. I believe it holds true for the parents and the visitors as well especially. It's almost funny that, not funny, but that we're, the parents are making decisions about their children, but we're saying you can't make it about yourself. So I just think it's obvious for this motion.
Okay. Ms. Hawk?
My great concern continues to be that the number of people who can come certainly to the, to the front of the schools is almost unlimited in in terms of delivery and pickups. And there's no way of knowing what exposure that would be. And I think as long as we're, I do realize that we are, we are showing a decline, but I still be, continue to be concerned for our staff, not not only our, our teaching staff, but for our, the the greeters at the door and the secretaries involved. I still think we need, we owe them protection, and I disagree with masking, with unmasking for visitors.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright?
I also think that masks should be optional for visitors as well as students. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cutright. Mr. Rolls?
No comment.
Okay, I use my debate time, I guess, just to ask if there would, for Dr. Benson or Ms. Fisher, I suppose, any thoughts on what this means? Any implications to consider? No? Okay. All right. I tend to agree with Ms. Hawk. While, yes, our students at this time masks are optional, we do see for staff that there are, at this point in time, state law, state regulations that require staffs, or masks, I'm sorry. And I tend to agree with the unknown, you know, when, when visitors come into the building, we're not, we're not, you know, we don't know if they've been exposed or so on and so forth. And people at our, the entryway, our greeters, our secretaries in buildings. So I tend to disagree as well. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, I'll post.
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion carries. All right. Okay, moving on, information items. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Mr. Bush?
No, I'm looking forward to meeting with the committee. I still haven't met with them yet.
All right. Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I do, and I have the information from our Chesapeake Bay meeting copied. So I wanted to pass that to the other board members, if you would. This was the meeting from last month. We have another meeting coming this week, the Executive Committee. And so, but this is just a groundwork of what Chesapeake Bay Governor's School is and what it offers, and some of the opportunities that, you know, it affords our, our youth. And it's just a very exciting place to be. And the second committee was the Gifted Advisory Committee, and I was not able to attend that. But Ms. Harris very graciously sent me the minutes. And the more important thing, I think, is that the education, the plan, the educational plan for the gifted will need to be updated in the coming year. So that will be, that will involve a lot of information gathering as, as the comprehensive plan did and, and as our special education plan always requires. So, and, and there were also some interesting transition issues identified between the elementary and the middle school since we've had a shift in grades. So I'll be relaying those to you as they come in. So, and that's all. Thank you.
All right. Dr. Cutright?
No report. Thank you.
Mr. Rolls?
I attended the Commonwealth Governor's School meeting. Nothing real significant to report there, just starting to go with the budget and like to our officers for this coming year. But the main thing that I got that some of you may have already received is the full-study evaluation that was done in April of CGS. say evaluation that was done in April of CGS. But the report came out in June, so if any of you would like to report, let me know. I can give it to you. But just a real quick summary, CGS been around for almost 25 years, and they held in high regard, and we had a good marks. The only things, I'll mention the two things that didn't meet standards in the interest of time. That was the teacher ratio, and then also some of the professional development, they wanted to see more training, gifted tech certifications. So that's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rolls. I attended the Title I Advisory Committee on Wednesday, February 9th. Ms. Harris gave an update on the number of students receiving Title I services, and she also noted that challenges have arisen across the Commonwealth as a result of the free lunch program that's been offered this year and last year, since Title I services are based on the number of students that apply for being, who qualify for free and reduced lunches. So obviously, lunches are free, meals are free, fewer families have been inclined to register as qualifying for free and reduced lunches. So anyway, it's not sure how that's going to be handled going forward, if there will be a waiver to base qualifications on previous years. Anyway, so that was unknown, but did note that that was a phenomenon, that we are not alone in that, in that regard, that many other schools, the divisions across the state are in the same position. The, each of the elementary schools gave updates on their plans for their spring family engagement events. I think it's continually impressive to me how creative they all are. So I know one that was pretty funny. So Sealston was really excited to talk about their One Book, One School event. They had just received the books like that day or the day before. So they bought The World According to Humphrey, which I think is about a hamster. And basically, all the students get it, and it's just to read like a chapter a day, or a chapter a week, I forget, anyway. And apparently, they even, Mrs. Howard, I guess, is going to dress up like a hamster. So I thought that was pretty funny to be in support of the book. So that's kind of cool. And then we, as a group, reviewed the family survey that they distribute to recipients of Title I services. And we reviewed it and gave some input. And then Mrs. Harris gave updates on the various grants that she's been pursuing for additional, in support of additional services. She's very busy applying for all those. That concludes my committee reports. Dr. Benson, do you have any superintendent reports in addition this evening?
I just have two quick announcements. First, I wanted to, want to thank Mr. Bradshaw and the King George Education Foundation, and also Ms. Howard and her staff at Sealston, in addition to a very generous family donation, donator, who, Mr. Bush and I had a chance to go out and be there for the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new greenhouse at Sealston. A great opportunity for students to engage hands-on and all that good stuff in the greenhouse. And I also want to take an opportunity to thank all of our professional school counselors. This past week included School Counseling Appreciation Week. And so we certainly appreciate all that our counselors do in our schools to help our students, particularly as we continue to press forward and hopefully find an off-ramp to this pandemic. So my appreciation to our school counselors, and I know I express that appreciation on behalf of many. That is it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Moving on to our board comment. Mr. Stillman, anything to add?
I know there was a lot covered by the CTE programs and all that, but all the winter sports are finishing up right now. I know the boys' basketball team is competing against Eastern View on Monday in the district tournament. Indoor track had regionals this past weekend, so we've got, I think, four people going on to state. The swim team also competed at regionals, they're moving on to state. The girls' swim team actually placed second in the region out of 17 schools. That was very impressive. I know the next play will be the Addams Family, and they're doing auditions, I think, in just, yeah, I think those are going on right now. That's about it.
Very nice. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Bush?
Well, I thank the Sealston Elementary for helping us with the pledge, and then the middle school chorus program that was nice, and DECA, Strauss, and then the FFA, and the FBLA, and HOSA, and the CTE program. Just thank you for all that hard work, and especially staff members, thank you for being here, helping with the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Ms. Hawk?
Yes. It's been an exciting month, and is an exciting month in our schools. And tonight, I know it's been long, but it's been full of really meaty, good information. And I've tried to be really positive tonight. So tonight, I want to bring up some of the positives we've seen. I've long been a fan of our NJROTC for all of these years, through many different instructors and students, but it continues to be one of the most successful programs in our division and other school divisions as well. And I want to give a shout out to our rifle team, our ROTC rifle team. They traveled a long way, and they did very well, and traveled a long way to get back. I guess it was sort of good that we had a rough day, a snow day for them. And secondly, I thank you, Dr. Benson, for mentioning the school counselors, because it's so important. The school counselors get a week of recognition, but they work all year round, whether they're paid or not. They're contributing even during the times that they're not being paid in school. These are the folks formerly known as guidance counselors. We've been extremely fortunate over the years to have counselors to help our students focus on choosing the best and appropriate routes for their path to education, and then on choosing the classes and the settings to support their goals. And we have a lot of kids, and we have counselors to do that for preschool through high school. Now, do we need more? We sure do. And I'll support whatever Ms. Fisher and the rest of you come up with in terms of trying to enable our counselors. What they do to help select classes is combined with assisting the staff with so many of the processes inside the school system, special education, attendance, testing, graduation, positive school activities such as STEM, arts night, sports, and the list goes on. Each of the school levels have their own set of systems that are supported by our counselors. The individuals have changed since I was supervisor of counselors and social workers, but the quality is not. And I want to thank all of our former counselors and our present counselors, and those in our system that are going to be counselors, because it's such a valuable position in our school systems for now, and especially for the future. And tonight, I'd like to share a positive experience that I had with a book. And I want to share this with you. I'm a reader of almost everything, especially given that I have grandchildren from five to 13 and a half. And I'm always on the lookout for books to send to them. But I want to introduce you to a book that was written by a family member of one of our teaching staff, Tracy Martin. And this was written by Laurianne Thompson, and illustrated by Sean Qualls. It's called Emanuel's Dream, The True Story of Emanuel of Fusu Yuboa. And it's, this, it's not a new book. It's available on Amazon, and I was able to get a used copy. But I also bought one for each of my grandchildren. And the gist of it is, caught up in the first line of it, "In Ghana, West Africa, a baby boy was born. Two healthy lungs let out a powerful cry. Two tiny fists opened and closed, but only one strong leg kicked." I won't give away the ending, except to quote the last line, "And one person is enough to change the world." So I want to give a positive recommendation for this wonderful book, and I conclude my tummy.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank Dr. Benson and the staff for recognizing the Board of Education and providing all the wonderful treats. We've gotten candy. I think there's something that you wear in a bag, a pillow. Just thank you very much. It was a big surprise. I would also like to recognize Career and Technical Education Month. So important to have CTE, DECA advocacy, JR, NJROTC, air rifle competition. And last but not least, I'd like to give a shout out to the King George County High School students who put on the play Silver Secret. And I, my husband and I thoroughly enjoyed the play, and those students are so talented. I just can't get over all the talent that they have at their age, and they're going to go far in life. But having the arts is so important as well. And I was impressed with the acting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good. Dr. Cutright? Mr. Rolls?
I'll echo that. Thank you for the gift. It's very kind, very thoughtful, and also happy Valentine's Day. I can safely say this has been a Valentine's Day like no other I've ever had. I believe it's only been our third meeting, and we've already tackled a lot of witty stuff. It's, I'm really, really formed groups. So as I've alluded to before, it's important to just kind of get to know each other, figure out how to work together well. I'm glad that we're making that a priority. And we just attend new member training the day after our last meeting. And something, they mentioned a lot of things there, of course, but something that I think we all agree is important is setting group norms. And one thing they said there that can typically be a source of conflict if it's not worked out is how to set the agenda. So I do hope that's something that can be a matter of discussion soon, so we can have that smooth, and that'll be good for us, along with norms in general. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rolls. So I'll just, in response to the agenda creation, I will remind everyone that we do have board norms and protocols that I did distribute to everyone that talks about how to get items on the agenda. And other than that, echo everyone else's sentiment, right? Thank you for all. This has been a very long meeting, and you're all still sitting here, so thank you for that. I'll keep it short and sweet. I was not able to attend the greenhouse ribbon cutting in Sealston. I was really sad about that. I'm a big gardener. I wanted to be there. But I did get to see it up from the other day at Sealston from one of my son's basketball games. So I took a peek at it out the window. Looks cool. So I'm sure it's going to start getting busy soon, since it's spring, and it's going to be time to start planning stuff. So I think that's great. And that, I will leave it at that. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711.8.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitutes, retirement, and terminations of employees of the school board, I move that we go into closed session.
Do we have a second?
I'll second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session. Do we have a motion to return to open session?
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712. Delta. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second and certify.
Do you certify, Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Certify.
Can I certify as well? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now in, we've now returned to open session. Do we have a motion to approve the action resulting from closed meeting?
I move that we approve the action resulting from the closed meeting.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now adjourned.